How many, do we have a moment of silence this morning?
Yeah, Wayne Reed Turchin from Cobb Mountain Pizza. He was just a fixture in the pizza parlor for Friday nights, soccer, you know, sports team afternoons, all kinds of events. He was just there. And we're really going to miss him. He was a really special part of the community and business owner.
Is there another one? I have one other. Last week, Wednesday, the Tribe of Robinson lost an elder, Wanda Galvin. A lot of her life she spent as a nurse taking care of elders and seniors and folks who are sick. Her services have already commenced, but she leaves behind her family and we give her family our greatest condolences. There's not any other?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lloyd, for stepping up. Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any?
We have no extra items.
All right, approval of consent agenda. It looks like we have 5.2, 5.3, 5.5, and... Yeah, no, that's what we have so far. Okay. And as you know, or if you don't know, consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial. However, they can be pulled for later discussion or if there's anything to be adjusted or fixed. And it can be done by the Board of Supervisors or by anyone in the public. So if there's any others from the board, I'll open it up to the public. If there is any public that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda, not on Zoom. Betsy, if you want to unmute and let us know which item you'd like to pull from consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Betsy Khan, would you be so kind as to pull and explain item 5.6, the properties being listed for purchase under just compensation?
All right, so we got 5.6. All right, Kelly, if you can unmute.
Good morning. This is Kelly Page on behalf of Social Services. We'd like to pull item 5.5. We need to do a little bit more work on this one and we'll be bringing it back at a later time.
Okay, yeah, we have that one listed. Thank you. All right, so if there's any, are there any others? All right, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items from the consent agenda 5.1, 5.2, 5.4, and 5.7. Take that out. 5.1, 5.4, and 5.7. I approve the ones that can be approved.
We have three we can approve and four that we have to discuss, so, all right. Lloyd, are we good? All right, so we have a motion. Did I hear a second? All right, well, I'll take Supervisor Owens. A motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? And motion carries 5-0. All right.
Rent, groceries, gas, childcare, everything gone has gone up. Meanwhile, our pay has not kept pace and we have not had a contract in a year and a half. Our previous contract expired at the end of 2023. In fact, many of us are struggling to make ends meet despite this serving this county and taking care of seniors and the disabled. In fact, many of us work multiple jobs just to pay, just to get pay. We are not asking for luxury, we're asking for dignity. We need wages that can keep up with the cost of, cost and we will recognize the hard work and dedications we bring to the job every day. The work we do to ensure Lake County's most vulnerable people and can, and can receive care in the safety of their homes. You believe as much as I do that everyone deserves to be paid what they're worth. This is about livable wages, our essential workers, and this is about ensuring that providers can continue to provide good care for the people in familiar places. You have the power, and I believe you will, to ensure we can have a livable wages. I ask that you support us, our contract negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Hello, good morning. My name is Roseanne Domingo and I'm an IHSS provider. I also serve on the bargaining team for SEI Local 2015. I'm District 3. I think I belong to you, EJ. Okay. Like many other IHSS providers in Lake, I take care of a family member, my uncle Ernie. It might seem like the work we do only affects our family, our own family members, but it actually impacts for the entire community. IHSS providers in Lake give thousands of older adults and peoples with disability the care they need, and we save the county millions by keeping them out of expensive living facilities. This is a crucial part of our healthcare system that should be a high priority in the county's budget. Our contract has been expired for a year and a half. So many caregivers in Lake County barely, are barely scraping by because our wages have not kept up with the cost of living, and these wages are not competitive enough to keep workers in the industry. In 2023, more than 400,000 authorized care hours went unused in Lake County. We can't lose caregiver, good caregivers to other industries that might, may, might pay higher and better wages like McDonald's, Taco Bell, Burger King. Because of the number of people who will need care in Lake is only going up. We're aging, all of us. Investing in long-term care is a win-win. You're ensuring the security of people who need care and the people who provide it. That includes families, but it also includes seniors and younger people who have built close relationships with, with care providers they will, they didn't know personally. I'm asking that you consider this as we continue negotiations for an agreeable contract. Thank you. Thank you all for listening to us today.
Thank you. What, did you get a piece of, one of the documents right there? Yeah, if you could fill that out. Thank you. Thank you for your comment as well.
Good morning. My name is Siva Jamali and I'll start with my age. I'm 70 years old and I'm having to work part-time with IHSS because I can't live on my social security. Now, 70, most people retire with other professions. They're retiring, not us. And I find it shameless that we have to fight every time we come up to a contract with this county. We are having to show up in force and tell you that we need a raise. You should already know that. Our wages are below what McDonald's is getting. You can check that fact. They're getting $20 an hour. I'm getting 17. And I'm 70. I won't be able to retire from IHSS because we don't get paid enough. I can't save. My social security isn't enough to live on. And you guys have that power. You have the power to give me a contract that's a livable wage so I don't have to work so hard at 70. I have 189 hours a month that I fill. Can you do that? I'd like to see you do it. I don't think you can, but I do because I don't have a choice. I don't have retirement to look forward to. I can't even pay into retirement. That's not part of the program. So please, when you consider our negotiations for this contract this time, be reasonable. Realize we need a good wage. Things are getting more expensive every day. Gas goes up and down, up and down, and we have to drive, most of us have to drive distances to our clients. So please, I'm begging you, use your conscience. Think about if you were doing this job, could you live on that wage alone and not have to work so hard when you're 70? Please, I, I want to retire just like everybody else. I don't want to still be having to do this job at 80, but can I save any money? No, because I don't get paid enough. I barely make it from paycheck to paycheck. And I'm sorry if I sound like I'm angry, but I, this is the first time I've had to battle the contract. Every time we come up for negotiations, we have to go through the same route where we have to come many times to ask you guys to help us. Why? It shouldn't be that complicated. It's not. You know what living wage is. All right, I hear you, Bella. Thank you very much for listening to me and I'm sorry if I sound like I'm angry, but like I said, this isn't the first time I've had to come to this podium about my contract and it gets a little tiring after a while. And you do have the power to change that. So please, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? All right, any on Zoom? If you could unmute iPhone SE and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Skylar Leywam, Pillsbury Family Farms, and I speak today for accountability because while many of you sit in positions of public trust, too many of you have forgotten who placed you there. You have let that trust erode under the weight of cover-up misstatements and outright violations of the public trust. We've watched it unfold in real time. People scrambling to rush procedures, cutting corners like it's standing operating procedure and making decisions that are well beyond their legal authority. That is not carelessness, it seems to be corruption with a smile. We've witnessed perjury, statements made with the intent to deceive, and worse. We've watched those lies be treated as fact while the truth was sidelined, redacted, and buried beneath bureaucracy. Let me be clear, this is not how public service is supposed to work. The county does not get to weaponize its position then hide behind the process. The county does not get to erase the truth with a memo. The county does not get to defame a former business owner who refused to kiss the ring and then act like it's part of regulation because it wasn't regulation. It was retaliation, pure and simple. When an honest business owner was targeted, slandered, and publicly humiliated by our county, not because they broke the rules but because they would not play along with a particular department head's game. Let me remind this chamber, the people you're pushing out are farmers, entrepreneurs, and families and county workers, just like those we've heard speak before us. The public is not your enemy. The public is this foundation and we are the hands that feed this land and we are the people and the minds that fuel this economy and the hearts that build this community. When we ask for fairness, when we ask for transparency, and we ask for equal protection under the law, and when I say this next part with all the weight that it deserves, justice is not a slogan, truth is not a footnote, and fairness is not something that you get to hand out based on obedience. As Russell Means once said, "The United States does not practice what it preaches," and that if it did, the truth would not be feared. Justice would be reserved for the few. And that same spirit lives here. This county fears the truth because the truth reveals the crack in its power. The truth is not something the county gets to manage. It is not a tool, it is a force and a living fire. No matter how many walls the county tries to build around it, the truth will still rise. Justice belongs to the people, to those that you tried to erase, to those that you keep slamming the door in their face every time they keep trying, and to those who have been cut down by the system only seem to come back stronger. We come to remind you that we already exist and that the ground that we stand on has memory. It knows who upheld their duty and it remembers who betrayed it. So while the mic is on, the truth is moving, remember, the public is done being silent. Mulehah.
All right, is there any other public input? All right, so we'll go ahead and close that portion of the agenda and move on to our 6.2, Pet of the Week.
My favorite part of the week.
Good morning. Animal Control Officer Pelayo, and today we have with us our new Animal Control Officer Pearlie, as well as Cub.
So cute.
This is Cub. He came to us about at the, the end of May and he's about four months old. When he and his eight siblings came in, they were sick and had fox tails in various areas. Since then, as you can see, they're very healthy and six of his siblings have already gone home to, to happy homes and he and his two siblings are ready to go and neutered and spayed and everything. And if you're interested in taking him home, you can come into 4949 Hillbush Drive and come meet your new best buddy.
What's his, what do you think his breed might be?
He's presumed to be pit bull, terrier mix.
He's so cute.
Thank you.
He looks adorable.
Thank you.
I don't think we've ever had such a quiet dog.
I know, he is so sweet.
I didn't even know we had one in the room.
I was thinking he had a little bit of that.
We'll move on to our 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of July 20, 20th through 26, 2025 as Probation Services Week here in Lake County. Vice Chair Rasmussen will be reading this proclamation and if you're here on behalf of this proclamation, please come up and stand with, with Vice Chair Rasmussen.
Good morning. There's a cow? They do fill the room.
Well, good morning. I'm honored to be able to read this proclamation. And this is a proclamation designating the week of July 20 through 26, 2025 as Probation Services Week in Lake County. Whereas the Lake County Probation Department's purpose is to improve the quality of life of individuals in Lake County by enhancing public safety, acknowledging staff accomplishments, assisting victims, and offering hope of a more productive lifestyle for those on supervision. And whereas probation professionals play a unique and essential role in the criminal and juvenile justice systems, keeping communities safe by providing justice-involved individuals with accountability, support, services, and tools necessary to safely and successfully reenter society. And whereas probation departments serve as key connectors within the justice system and the community, maximizing the resources available through courts, local governments, law enforcement, social services, behavioral health providers, schools, crime survivor organizations, and nonprofit agencies. And whereas comprehensive training equips probation professionals to manage the trauma and complex needs of offenders while safely connecting them to the support and supervision necessary for successful reentry. And whereas probation departments have a profound impact on the community's safety and well-being by addressing the root causes of crime through individualized supervision and support that reduce recidivism. And whereas probation fosters a safer, healthier Lake County by ensuring that individuals serving their sentences within our communities or those re-entering communities after incarceration are equipped with the tools, services, support, and supervision they need to be safe and successful. And whereas we recognize and commend the critical role of Lake County's probation professionals and celebrate Probation Services Week in honor of their ongoing dedication to justice, rehabilitation, and community safety. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed, the Lake County Board of Supervisors designate July 20 through 26, 2025 as Probation Services Week to highlight Lake County's probation's immense contributions to the community and pass it adopted this 22nd day of July and signed by our Chair, EJ Crandall. Thank you. And I know you have partner agency here as well, Behavioral Health and anyone else. We also appreciate their integrated work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors and Chair Crandall. I do want to start with maybe not a high note, but our industry this month has had two tragedies fall it. And I, I think during this time where we highlight the work our team does every day, I want to acknowledge those two things. On July 10th, Joshua Byrd, parole officer with Alameda County, was shot at the parole office and lost his life. He had a wife and three children. And San Joaquin Deputy Probation Officer James Christensen, on the same day, was set on fire at the probation off, at the probation office in San Joaquin County, and he is still hospitalized and recovering from his injuries. And it just is a highlight on the incredibly dangerous work our staff does every day. They come in and they're dedicated to making Lake County safe and changing people's lives. And that's what they do. They do it with big hearts, with dedication, and they're here tirelessly every day. And I'm very proud to work with each and every one of them and all of our partnering agencies and we just are so thankful for this proclamation today. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try not to cry. Hi, Louise Jones, I'm the Director of Lake County Behavioral Health and I've had the privilege and honor of working with Chief Deputy Probation Officer Monfrans, as well as many other people. And it, I think we're actually a model, is it, is it good now, Sam? Okay. A model of how to work together in the state of California, to be honest. Some of you may know, but some of you may not, that we actually live together. We're co-located in an office building in the Lower Lake area, which is really great because we serve a lot of the same people. And so now we can just walk down the hall and talk to each other, coordinate. So that's just one of the many ways that we've partnered together over the years, but we wouldn't have gotten to that really great place unless we had such strong working relationships. And I know firsthand, we have a lot of staff at Behavioral Health that have came through Lake County probation. One of them is here today and there are others who are in, all the way in the front lines, you know, working with people to leadership. And, and that is a testament to the work that probation does in developing people who find themselves again. find themselves again, find their own power and, and, and allowing them a way to make better choices in service of our community. So just thank you so much.
Hey y'all, my name is Mountain. Some of you might know me from my radio shows. Some of you might know that I work for Lake County Behavioral Health as a peer support specialist. But there was a time, actually six years, eight months, and three weeks ago, I was actually a client. And uh, I'll tell you, it, I came out of prison. Officer Morphin was my parole officer and I had not a clue what I was gonna do. And uh, but I did know this. I wasn't gonna use anymore and I wasn't gonna come back. And what I wanted was I wanted to, for him to show me a little respect. And he did, and with that, I showed him respect. The respect I get, and I get it every day from you guys when I work with you and with the community. It was earned and it was, you know, that respect, I had to earn it because I had it be another way. But you guys taught me that and I thank all you guys for loving me and respecting me and guiding me. At this point i- in my life, I work for Lake County Behavioral Health. I'm also now working with the Justice of All Team. I never had that dream because I didn't think it was possible. You know, I'll tell you a quick little story because it means a lot to me. When I started working for Lake County Behavioral Health, Officer Morphin seen me at a pit count. He goes, hey, what are you doing here? And I go, I'm starting to work with these guys. And he got all emotional and I got emotional. And that was the respect I needed. That was the thing I needed to drive me to say, you know what, I can do this. And then through the years, I've talked to you, I've talked to many people and they just treat me like I'm not that old outlaw I used to be. And so the biggest thing I, I, I get out of working with you guys is that you motivate me because you show me love and respect so I can go on. And now today I get to sit in the judges' chambers and work with the, with the court system. And uh, you know, I'm not, now I'm a different part of the court system, all because of you guys. And with that said, I just want to, you know, thank you. Thank you all.
So I just wanted, Rachel Duman Parsons, Lake County Social Services Director. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Wendy and her entire team for the support they provide to Child Welfare Services and making our families and children stronger and safer in Lake County. So thank you all for everything you do to partner with us.
If there's anyone from the public, please come up. We'll, we'll go that, yes, please come up, sir.
Good morning, my name's Alexandra Ariola. I want to thank you guys for having me today. I, I am here to talk about some of the chapters of my life and some of the things I have endured. I grew up in Modesto, California with my brother and raised by a single mother. My dad was in and out of my life, so I never had a really father figure growing up. Without him in my life, I escaped to the streets. My mom was always working and there was no one in my life to teach me right from wrong. I basically went to the streets for comfort and found my way in and out of the system. The elders and the folks I looked up to in my life were older men who showed me love and support and loyalty. At this point, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. I found myself being raised by gang members and I looked up to them as father figures. They taught me how to function on the same level together as a neighborhood and to commit crimes together like a family. At that time in my life, I created revenue, I created revenue for the gang and supported their habits. I thought this was something I wanted to be part of. At age eleven, I began going to juvenile hall for stealing cars, possessing firearms, stabbing rival gang members and assaults. From this point on, I became a ward of the courts. I was sent in and out of group homes and I ran from to the group homes I was sent to. I was on the run for about two months before I was caught. Eventually I was caught and sentenced to a hundred eighteen months in California youth prison. All I knew growing up was violence and assaults. That was normal to me. It's all I knew, I, I, it's all I knew at this time in my life. Every day in CYA was filled with riots and fights. It became my way of life. The way I was taught to resolve any conflict was with any type of violence. In that world, if you don't react the way you would become, you'd become a victim yourself. I was di- I was discharged from CYA after two years and three months without any violence in the facility for the pri- for the prior three months. I ended up on adult probation in Stausos County at age nineteen. I was still very active in the gang life at that time. I was sucked in by money, power, greed, and the, and the, what the gang life provided me. I became a target of the gang task forces, was eventually arrested just for my association with other gang members and who I was working and hanging with. I've spent very little time in county jail. I ended up taking a deal for three years in state prison for a robbery I committed at age twenty-one. I did two years and ten months in state prison for that case. I discharged on parole at age twenty-four. Five months later, I found myself going back to prison for a year and eight months. During my last six months of incarceration, my brother had gone out of prison and was living with my mom. He was very involved in gang life as well because of his lifestyle for my, because of his lifestyle, my mother's house was shot twenty-seven times. At this moment, I grew distant from the gang lifestyle and began to think the way I was living my life. I began to look towards the future and realized all the loyalty that was preached to me was all false propaganda. When I was released from prison the second time, I was on PR, PRCS in Stausos County. I decided the only way I could change my life was to change my environment. I transferred my PRCS to Lake County where I moved with my wife and daughter. My past experiences on probation, parole, and PRCS, I felt just like a number. Moving to Lake County has changed my experience within the system. I used to run from supervision because I didn't trust that I was getting the help I needed. Since moving to Lake County, I have a personal relationship with my PO. Since moving here, my PO and I talk every couple of weeks and he has supported me in getting my driver license and finding a job. He has taught me nothing happens overnight and through his support, things are starting to fall in place. I am learning to think about the long term of being part of society and giving up my gang lifestyle. Within the timeframe of supervision in Lake County, I have taken advantage of their tattoo removal program. This was not easy. This was not an easy decision for me because my tattoos were earned. I have to learn to let go of my pride that I had once for my gang and focus on the future of my family. And I realize if I don't break the cycle, I will not be present in my daughter's life, the way my father was not present in mine. If I continue to choose the way of living that I used to, I will never be successful. I am now focusing on my family, doing what's right, and being present in their lives. Thank you for having me and I appreciate your time.
Anyone from the public still want to come up? You still have an opportunity? All right.
Uh, my name is Jordan Garcia and I used to do lots of bad things when I was younger and used to hang out with the wrong people. Used to just like, I got a good set of parents, but I was just like, not paying attention to them, not listening, just go to school, not, not do anything in school. And would just hang out with the wrong kids and then got into some big problems where school could have been gone for a long time, made my family sad. And that made me sad. So I was trying to do, do better for, for my mom and dad. You know, they raised, they raised me pretty good. And like, so I don't know how to really explain it, my bad, but yeah, so uh, me, me get, me get into a bad, me getting into a bad situation really changed my life because I don't know, I don't know how to explain it, my bad, but um.
Just speak from your heart, you're doing good.
Yeah, so, so me getting into a bad situation changed my li- I went, went to jail. Was, could have gone to jail for a long time, made my parents sad, nah. So like, that changed, that changed me, like how I would view things. And like, it changed the way how I viewed a lot of things. Used to just like always be outside, doing bad things with my friends till got into that situation. And that changed the way I viewed, viewed, started viewing things. Got, went to jail for a little bit, got back, got out. Decided like, never want to go back, don't want to make my family go through things again for my dumb decisions. And like, I don't know how to explain it, it's just yeah, I don't know how to explain it well, it's just my bad, I just don't know.
You did great, you're doing great.
So me going through all that made my family, made everyone in my family, you know, go through it with me too. Missed my family every day that I was in jail because of the bad decisions I did. And had my family going, I wasn't, it wasn't just me going through the problems. It was my family too. You know, they had their son doing dumb decisions they shouldn't be doing. And and so you know, I, my bad, I just don't know how to explain it, I'm not a good speaker. So you know, me getting out and realizing like the dumb decisions isn't a good way of living life. I decided to change my lifestyle and like go to school, stop hanging with bad influences. Started, got a job, you know, trying to do better in life for my parents and my family. On, yeah, my bad, I just don't know how to explain it well. Yeah, my bad.
There any other public input or anyone that would like to come up and speak?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Come on up.
You're all parole officers? Uh, probation?
My name's Matthew Monk and uh, I come from Bu- Glen County. I got five times in prison under a C number, so it's been a long time, okay? If it wouldn't have been for the cops and probation parole in Glen County, I wouldn't be here. I'd be doing a life sentence, you know, for, for, for stuff, okay? Why the officers decided to help me, I don't know. They seen me fighting for my kids. When you started talking, man, I was trying to keep from crying back there. I'm sixty-five years old and this is my first meeting. I came down here to see what y'all look like, okay? Because I've been conspiracy theorist for forty years, talking shit about the government. And then it was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, I really don't know anything about my government. So that's why I'm down here and congratulations, both of you guys. You know, don't stop because I'm sixty-five, I ain't quitting, but thank you. I just want to say thank you, seriously, you know, appreciate you.
That's awesome. There any other one else that would like to come up and speak? If you're on Zoom, please, uh, please unmute and state your name for the record and then uh, go ahead and say what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my name is Angela Emerald. I just want to say that Lake County is fortunate to have such a great probation department. Lake County Probation Department focuses on helping people, not just enforcing the law. They go above and beyond to help people to become better people in the society and they stay actively involved. Those of you that remember my name know who you are. Kevin, I see you. And I can't thank you guys enough for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other? No? All right, I will close public input at this time and we'll let the board speak if there's anything. I know that I'll start out and say that I'm really grateful to see the collaboration between Behavioral Health, probation, and other agencies, you know, I, uh, social services. I know the Sheriff's Department gets involved as well. We're starting to get into another era or new era where we understand that a lot of these uh, things that people do that we do, you know, um, I'm, I'm not exempt from having a troubled life. A lot of things that we do, um, comes from our upbringing and a lot of uh, things that happen as children or things that we never were taught. Parenting, um, I can speak for myself, my, my mother didn't know how to be a parent, she had me at fifteen. So with that, um, you know, we have hard lives, we do these things. Other, other relatives that I have on the rancheria or even when I lived in the city, it, it was a lot of, had to do with parenting, a lot of examples. And so we want to belong, we want to go around people, no matter what their uh, goal is in life. If it's bad and, and it's, it's stealing or it's, you know, gang life, as long as we feel accepted, that's what we care about. You know, that's what, that's what we're looking for. And so working to have that collaboration gives the opportunity to really get to the root of that, so there's no recidivism. It's a very hard situation, but really glad that you're all here, really glad you do the work you do. And thank you for coming up and speaking, you're very brave. And just keep up the good work, you know, and break that cycle, you know, break that cycle for your children and for your nephews, nieces, or cousins, or whoever. You know, and sir, thanks for coming up and sharing your story um, on the side over here.
Glen County.
Any other supervisor, Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, I'll keep it short just because I think the presentation speaks for itself. Appreciate the programs that are being run through the probation department. It is being highlighted in the state, I know Director Jones mentioned that we can use this as an example throughout the state. CSAC highlighted the program, called me and said, oh my God, what's happening in your county? So it's amazing that we're doing the work that we're doing, trying to change people's lives. The two folks that came up and shared their story, thank you very much for sharing your story. Part of my job is to take phone calls and help folks and connect folks. And it's not just businesses and other politicians and people like that, it's everybody. So we have a card outside, I don't really care if you live in the city of Clear Lake where I represent or somewhere else. Reach out to one of us if there's anything that you ever need. We can help guide you and provide you connections to jobs and other things like that, that we want to help you with. At least I want to help you with, so please take advantage that you're here. We're here for you, not the opposite, so thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to everybody, um, our probation officers. You guys are obviously doing an amazing job and you've touched a lot of lives. And you can see the fruits of your labor right here in this room. For those that got up and spoke that have been through the system on the other side, that was a huge testament. We have somebody working for us now, is it Mountain?
Yeah.
And we have somebody coming in from Glen County and we have a couple of others in the audience and, and you know what? I was fighting tears, listening to you guys talk. So that was huge and uh, so this is a testament to how many lives you have changed and going down the right road. And I'd say kudos and keep up the good work and I'm really proud of all of you. Thank you.
Well, and thank you for all your work on the front lines every day because you are the face that people see. And you're, and it's your hand that's holding these folks' hands as they walk through the system. And with Behavioral Health, I mean, I always say collaboration is our superpower in this county and we're getting really good at it. And I do also want to mention that I had someone reach out to me about two weeks ago that um, he, he called me, I think it was three years ago, really desperate for help and has been through multiple, multiple of our departments. And he, he, he reached out a few weeks ago to let me know that he's clean and sober. He's um, gone through Hilltop and he is working on getting his children back. And it's all because of your help, so thank you so much.
All right, all right, well, is there any closing remarks that you would like to, no? All right, well, Sam, I think we're ready for a picture here.
Do you want to come up here with us?
I think she's trying to say you're shorty.
I said shorty.
The identities we live by.
Thank you. Wendy.
Bye Wendy.
Wendy.
Thank you.
Isn't that our norm?
Yeah. We'll go ahead and take a quick break. I know we're behind, but, uh, we'll take it right now so we can get into it from here. So we'll come back at 10. All right, welcome back from the break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our 6.4. Uh, consideration of a letter of commitment for the enhancing wildfire prevention through targeted defensible space and fuels reduction project in Lake County's high-risk Clear Lake and North Shore neighborhoods. Project of the Lake County Resource Conservation District Cal Fire Wildfire Prevention Grant, number 78873218. Supervisor Pyska, this looks like you are the sponsor for this and I see that we have Terry Lockston here as well.
I am the sponsor, but I'm going to pass it off to our, uh, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. And I think that we've got Resource Conservation District on Zoom as well.
Correct.
Julia.
I think John is on, I'm not sure. And, and John Vanderbord.
Okay.
And Deanna Fernway. Um, so thank you, Board. Terry Lockston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. I'm here today to present for your consideration a letter of commitment that would be written to the Lake County Resource Conservation District. Um, and we're really excited about this project, or I know I am. Uh, because it, when funded by Cal Fire, it will complete defensible space implementation on at least 100 lots in the North Shore area, including targeted fuels reduction on approximately 45 abandoned tax default properties and paper lots um, that pose a longstanding and intractable wildfire risk to residents. Complete defensible space implementation on at least 100 lots in the city of Clear Lake, focusing on the densely vegetated avenues or Chapman Track neighborhood. Service sequel lead for proposed fuels reduction activities. Treatments will focus on properties located within the very high fire severity zone and prioritize connectivity with critical evacuation routes wherever possible. And then, um, we have two, uh, different types of events. So the first one is it will give funding to the Lake County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services to deliver Operation Lake County Ready, a bilingual public education campaign that will feature open firehouse events, so at each of the fire districts. And then North Coast Opportunities will bring that all together and hold a one-day summit with panels, um, um, you know, focusing on home hardening, uh, that, who, the staff that is with NCO that is on the call will talk about that. So we're very excited and we hope that your board will support this, uh, grant application by the Resource Conservation District.
All right. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
So I appreciate that there's not any specified properties and that it's, uh, working with the, um, communities to figure out what's best, uh, and what's needed, uh, for both the North Shore and for the Clear Lake area and that it's such a diverse number of properties which will have a, a greater impact, in my opinion, um, and spreads out, um, the issue that I have with, uh, gifting of public funds to others. One of the things that I just want to mention and it's not anything, um, that's needed to discuss, I just want to highlight it. We just had a conversation with Sonoma Clean Power. They have a legislation that opts people in automatically. Uh, we have other opt-ins that our schools are using and I really think we need to look at changing the way the state law goes for, uh, right-of-entry where if we're doing fire protection for communities and not just for one specific property, such as vacant lots and especially paper parcel lots, we need to change the laws to allow us to do. If you sign this and say you want to opt out, that's great, or else we're sending you a letter that opts everybody in to do this type of work. Uh, I think that it's a necessary tool because this right-of-entry, especially for 100, that's probably going to be their biggest hurdle to this entire process. Uh, appreciate that you're doing it, but I want to find ways to reduce the barriers. Uh, and just the fact that we had that Sonoma Clean Power conversation where we are automatically opting people in, why can't we do that if we're lowering the vegetation and limbing up trees? We're not destroying, uh, we're not tearing down trees, we're not tearing down buildings. We're just mitigating the potential for these fires and disasters from happening. And I just think that's a, a doable thing and, uh, hopefully that can change in the future.
Thank you. That's an interesting idea. I hadn't thought about that.
All right. There's nothing else, I'll open it up for public comment.
Board of Supervisors, uh, thank you guys for all being here today. Um, I don't think that there's anything else on the agenda that could possibly be more important than this particular issue right at this point in time of the year. Um, thank you guys for putting this all together and bringing it about, all the different agencies and groups that are working together, taking into account all everybody's wants and needs. Uh, it really shows your ability to reach out into a broader spectrum as opposed to just being isolated here. So, well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
If I may, thank you Supervisor Pyska for putting this on the agenda. I know there was some outreach when I was away and I did not jump on this right away. So appreciate Supervisor Pyska for bringing this to the board. Since there was kudos being given, I wanted to make sure to direct it to the appropriate place.
Yeah, this is just a letter of support, so it's only the first step. But it speaks to what I was speaking of earlier with collaboration as we spent years building the Risk Reduction Authority and investing in relationships so that we could get to this place where we are putting together a really collaborative, high-quality grant application. So hopefully we're successful with this.
All right, so with that, uh, I think we just need action, right?
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I want to check if there's any public comment in Zoom.
Oh. All right.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the letter of commitment for the enhancing wildfire prevention through targeted defensible space and fuels reduction projects in Lake County's high-risk Clear Lake and North Shore neighborhoods. Project of the Lake County Resource Conservation District Cal Fire Wildfire Prevention Grant, Prevention Grant 78873218.
Second.
Lloyd?
Just to authorize the chair.
And authorize the chair, same.
Still second.
So I still have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you very much. And thank you for being on and in case we had questions or anything like that, thank you for being a part of this. All right. Next, we have our 6.5 consideration of presentation on phases one and two of the Climate Health Adaptation and Resilience Mobilization Charm Lake County Program. And Terry, I, I think you are leading this as well. Trevor.
In California.
Good morning, Board. Again, Terry Lockston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. I'm here today to present, uh, or to present the team from Tracking, California and Sarah Ryan from the Big Valley Band of Pomodians on the Charm Lake County Collaborative Project. It is a partnership with the Center for Disease Control's Natural, National Environmental Public Health Tracking Program, the Climate Health Adapt- The Climate Health Adaptation and Resilience Mobilization, or CHARM, Lake County Program, has recently completed Phase One of its work to support resilience and safety in natural disasters. And today, they're going to talk about some of the results from Phase One and give a presentation and talk about what's next for Phase Two. So, I will turn it over and let you all introduce yourselves. You have to speak directly into the mic.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the Board for making time for us today to give this presentation. I'm Susan Paul Yukonas. I'm with Tracking, California, and part of the leadership team of this project.
Hi, everyone. My name is Scarlett Sands Bliss. I'm a research data analyst with Tracking, California, and part of the CHARM team.
Hi, and I'm Michelle Wong. I'm also part of the leadership team on the CHARM project.
And we're also joined by Terry, who will be joining us as part of the leadership for Phase Two, and Sarah, who has been absolutely vital partner through all the phases and other projects as well. So, okay, we'll jump into it. So, here's what we're going to touch on, a little bit of the history about.
Sorry, just real quick, Sarah, did you want to come up and join up top? We can get a chair. Okay, all right. Just making sure, because you were announced as one of the folks, so sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we will be calling on Sarah for questions that come up. So, we'll give you a little bit of the history about the project, and then we'll really be focusing today on what we've learned and some of the recommendations that we can offer the county and the Board. And then a brief preview of where we're going. We have new funding for the next four years. And let's, and we've done the introductions, I think, for everybody except Alicia from Big Valley, and we really appreciate her service on this project as well. So, what is this thing? It is now called Community Health Adaptation and Resilience Mobilization, Lake County. So, same acronym, but for funding reasons, we decided to make a couple of changes in language. This project was, it finished up in May, was a two-year, essentially a planning grant funded by the National Institutes of Health, and we started this during the COVID era, which was interesting and exciting and did a lot of things remotely. As we mentioned, it's been a true partnership between Tracking, California at the Public Health Institute and Big Valley. Absolutely could not do any of this work without that partnership, and we so appreciate it. And the goals were first and foremost to bring together as many different people who work with, in particular, at-risk communities in Lake County around issues of climate resilience. So, bring all those folks together and have a forum where regular cross-communication and collaboration could happen, and then we'll show you who we were able to bring to the table for that in a moment. And then we really wanted to focus on issues of extreme heat and harmful algal blooms, which we know are a significant problem in Lake County and climate-driven. And then take everything that we could learn during these two years. And we did a lot of deep diving into collecting data and learning from people to develop a plan. And Scarlett will be presenting the findings and the roadmap that came out of all this work. So, these are the different agencies and organizations, tribes, municipalities that were a part of the working group. And we just cannot say enough how much we appreciate these people. Almost every one of them was, took time out of their professional life to do this. A few folks had some compensation and were outside of professional time. But most people, and I know everyone in these agencies is incredibly busy and stressed, and so very appreciative for their time. Next slide. And here's what we got from our efforts. So, we did a public survey, and it was a very lengthy survey. I think we estimated that it took most people about 45 minutes to fill out. So, we were thrilled that we got over 200 responses that were clearly from Clear Lake. It was a public survey, so we got some folks who were, you know, had, who were out of town. But we got this number of people who clearly lived here, had awareness of the various issues, and gave us so much information about their experiences, their challenges, and all things heat and harmful algal bloom. And then we did a deeper dive with the most at-risk communities. We did one-on-one interviews that typically lasted about an hour. We'll show some of the communities that we worked with on the next slide. But they were very free-form, and we just asked people about their experiences with these kinds of events and heard many, many stories from them. And we have a lot of snippets from those stories to share in the roadmap that Scarlett will be sharing. We had 13 working group meetings, and we really endeavored to have these be bidirectional experiences so that we were hearing a lot from all those folks who were on the working group, but we also wanted to contribute to their work, help support what they were doing. So, one of the first things that we did as a part of the project was to collect as many different, we just call them resources, but they were other programs, state-led programs. I know we connected some folks with granting programs in the state. Some of the tribes have been able to leverage those. But programs that were similar in other states, federal programs, all kinds of things, and then lots of data sources. And we compiled all that and shared that with the working group. And those resources are also available to anyone in the county who wants to leverage them. They are a part of what Scarlett will be sharing with you. And I don't think it will come as a surprise to folks here that there were many at-risk groups that we identified. And of course, full acknowledgement that many people fall into more than one of these groups, which makes the challenges and the barriers to resilience all the greater. But these are the groups that we identified and that we focus on in the roadmap. And Scarlett is going to take over and show you what we found.
All right. Thanks, you all. I'm going to switch over to our web-based view, really briefly. Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know. What was that? Switching screens. So, one of the first things that I said, as we've shared the roadmap more publicly, is, you know, as we're thinking about an action plan or a way to summarize everything we learned from communities over the past two years, we started really hearing from our working group and other folks involved that what would be much more useful to them is a really digestible, navigable, and easy-to-use website rather than a PDF report that came out of these first two years. And so, the roadmap is a website. We also can constantly, we can continue updating it. We can add resources as folks submit them to share them with us, and that's the goal. It's meant to be usable. It's a distillation of all of the work that we've done over the past two years and what we've learned from communities through the different events that we held over the past two years. And importantly, it's not a new plan. I think it's really meant to be a tool to supplement the work that the county is already doing and all of the partners that we had through the first two years have been doing, and to create some other additional testimonies and data and, you know, evidence that all of these, you know, directions to support resources that support folks' resilience during heat waves, power shut-offs, harmful algal blooms. So, this is the homepage here. Let's see. And now we've got Wi-Fi. And we organized it, again, based on a lot of feedback from our working group in three different kind of ways of being able to search through the information. You can look by natural hazard or climate-driven event. You can look into a different, into information by vulnerable community, and then by the strategies that were kind of brought together from all that information. More information about the project is in this About the Roadmap page. A lot of it is linkable, and we hope it's, you know, cite it, use it in any way that is helpful to your work. And then we also have a lot of information about kind of all of that asset mapping, formulation of the working group, and then this data collection effort. The interviews that we did were done all in partnership with Big Valley, Sarah, Alicia at Big Valley EPA, along with Michelle and I and a couple other, and Susan. Many of us did interviews with folks, and we're just really grateful for the amount of time that folks were willing to and stories that they were willing to share with us all across the county. So, an example of a page organized by natural hazards could be extreme heat. It'll give, each one will give a little bit of a background on the challenge at large, and then specific populations that might be at higher risk to extreme heat. This is something that we all, we all already know, right? And then a bit about specific data of extreme heat in Lake County. And then where it gets exciting is kind of these highlights from the surveys and interviews. And during this process, we were able to include questions, like this is very small, but when you get the chance to go look at it, questions that our partners wanted the answers to, and people in the working group are really interested in to act, to work with their projects. So, one of them was, we work closely with the COAD, Community Organizations Active in Disaster, and Tammy and Pastor Shannon. They were really interested in understanding how far away a cooling center or a resilience hub would be for someone to still be interested in using it. So, we present a lot of that data throughout the roadmap. And then on every page will be people's stories. And so, I really encourage, as you're curious, and if, you know, testimony is important to a grant application or the work that you're doing, to take, you know, take time looking through all of these quotes. This is a brief snapshot of the, you know, over 60 hours of interviews that we have from folks. And we're also really happy to continue sharing kind of the results from these surveys and reviews as it's helpful on a, you know, case-by-case basis with folks. You can also search by vulnerable communities in Lake County. An example here might be people experiencing homelessness. We worked closely with county behavioral health peer support centers to do a range of interviews during the first phase. And then, you know, we highlight groups that work with that county, with that, sorry, that population in the county, and then more community voices. And then finally, I'll just highlight the strategies. So, this is where we collect kind of everything that we heard from people into specific strategies that are already being undertaken in the county through so many different efforts, but can be underscored by what we heard from the community. And Susan's going to talk about these a little bit more in a minute. And then the last thing that I'll point you to is this resources page, a place that can be continuously added to. This includes that link to the inventory of all of the, anything, climate, health, and extreme heat, harmful algal blooms-related kind of database that we built up over the two years and share with the working group, as well as a lot of county, state tools, and hazard mitigation plans and offices, links to different, different resources. So, I'll stop that share now.
Thank you. And as we move into talking about the strategies and a few recommendations that are oriented towards a county level, I just really want to highlight, not highlight, but just acknowledge and appreciate how much is already going on. I mean, I think that was one of the most interesting parts of this for us, is seeing how many different agencies, entities, NGOs were already working in this space and learning so much from them. And, you know, all the more easy to then look at where there are still some gaps. So, if you want to advance. So, we did break this into six strategies. I just pulled out a couple of strategies that are particularly relevant to the county for each of these. And I'm not going to go into a deep dive. I think we're, if you want to just advance. A lot about resilient centers. I know the county is working on resilient centers. COAD is working. Tribes have resilient centers. We have a lot of recommendations there. And a lot of Phase Two of this project will be focused on resilient centers as well. So, we see a lot of space there. A lot about transportation. We talked about this with the Risk Reduction Authority yesterday, and I think there's a lot of ways that transportation could be improved in emergencies. And we have some ideas that are in the roadmap. Communication and coordination, I mean, it's just really what we're here to talk about, is keeping these most vulnerable and at-risk communities in mind during the planning. And training, always essential, really a lot, we heard so much about trust in the at-risk communities and needing to have already built up that trust before the need for action is there. And then finally, data and monitoring. And one of the things we just wanted to call out, because we know it's on the agenda, is around cyanobacteria and, you know, making sure that meetings and conversations and communications are still happening around that. And the very important monitoring work that Big Valley is doing, I think, is really vital, and a lot of people really rely on that. And just talking really briefly about Phase Two, and then we'll wrap up. We have been awarded a four-year continuation grant by NIH. This is an intervention study, so it's a complex what we're doing. We're not just kind of coming in in free form, working with different communities, but very set systems that we have to do in order to evaluate the intervention. But we're very excited about it. We're going to be working with a lot of different resilient centers that you can see on the right there, and focusing on four of those most at-risk groups, seniors, unhoused individuals, tribal members, and outdoor workers. And we hope to be working with even more folks in the county and as we go along and learn more during this process.
And one last thing I would say about this is, kind of what we learned from Phase One is our big goals here are not to reinvent the wheel, but to work with these existing trusted spaces that already de facto serve as resilient centers or communities, unhoused folks, tribal members, seniors, and outdoor workers are already going to for support during heat waves and these different events. And then also to connect them with resources that already exist. So, making sure everyone has access to Lake Co-Alerts and making sure everyone has an emergency plan for when, you know, a wildfire might happen. So, kind of really continuing to connect to existing resources is the goal.
And just a huge appreciation for everyone who worked with us. You can see many of the different events and gatherings that we had and some of the materials that were, and I think that's it. And these are our contact information, if you'd like to follow up with us. And that is on, we changed some of the slides, so the distribution looked a little bit different. And then we just put this back up here if there are questions about any of that. And thank you so much for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Sarah, did you want to add anything, please?
Thank you, Sarah Ryan, Big Valley, Band of Pomo Indians. This has been a great project because it's an opportunity. It's been an opportunity to really dive deep into our most vulnerable communities in Lake County. I, you know, certainly remember, I'm sure a lot of people do, that during the PSPSs, you know, not having any power, and some of those days were quite hot, or, you know, you were just in the elements, and what do you do during those emergencies? This project is to help create those backstops. And it was very interesting to actually check in with all of our working group members to see, you know, what are your policies, what are your plans, your programs to deal with extreme heat when it happens? And so, we're all learning and growing with this together, and we've been able to, you know, not only hear from the people who are affected, and, you know, actually during a tabletop exercise where we were pretending, you know, just kind of like, oh, this disaster will happen, and this disaster. So, cyanobacterial bloom, the toxins will be so bad, there's danger levels everywhere, and then there'll be a fire, and then there'll be an evacuation, and then this extreme heat wave. It actually happened like the month after, you know, so the guy who set up all of the, you know, potential things. So, you know, we really are dealing with this, and it's fantastic to be working together to, with the county and all the other folks that are part of the working group to make sure that people aren't suffering as much, you know, during these extreme heat events. And that was the goal of it, is just how do we limit that suffering and get people to resources? So, yeah, just wanted to, I'm glad we got the funding. And Tracking, California, has been just an amazing partner, leading this charge and working with us. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate the report and apologize that I have a negative that I want to share. I don't like the way it's worded in the "who is at risk in Lake County", that it says exposure to Clear Lake. If it said exposure to HABs, I would completely understand, because that is an absolute risk. But just generalizing it to the exposure of Clear Lake is not a healthy way to describe the lake throughout the year, throughout even our summer. And I think it's a little too broad and places a very negative connotation about our lake and how people should, we have signage, we have, there's times where we have to put out press releases, and we have a very good process. In fact, we'll be talking about that a little bit later today. But the fact that it says in a public document, exposure to Clear Lake is a risk, does not make me happy for how we're conveying that message to the outside. And I wish that we could change that to just... And I wish that we could change that to just exposure to habs, because habs can occur in other bodies of water.
I thank you so much for raising that, and I think that's an easy one. I think we just fixed that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. We do have our issues when it comes to climate change and the experiences that we unfortunately have had and will continue to have, so I appreciate this report, and thank you for taking my comment in a positive way.
And if I may add, this is a, like Scarlett said, it's a living document, and we know that as we compiled the feedback that we got and the, the data, you know, we're framing it from our, our perspective, the working group has had a chance to review, but we know folks are busy. So we do expect and hope that as you look at this and see that something might be framed in a way that is not productive, or maybe is not accurate, that please do let us know, we're really happy to change it. Nothing here is, for us, I think it's really here to support the work that's happening in the county and other, the tribes and the NGO. So just welcome that, and we will be adding a feedback, a link to a feedback form, and our contact information is there as well. So if anybody sees something that is inaccurate or has a recommendation on framing, we really welcome that.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from the board? Oh, did you want to add something before I open it to the public?
I just wanted to add that I think that it is, as you know, as we write grants, different, of our different departments, it's a lot of times very hard to get Lake County-specific data, and this is that opportunity. And so I'm really thankful for the Phase One and to continue in Phase Two, so that we have actual things to use to justify the, the work and to request funding, so thanks.
Awesome. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, please come on up, or if you're on Zoom. Betsy, if you would unmute?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Scarlett and Sarah and everybody that's been involved in this. It is every bit of what they have explained, it's a very important project and very helpful. I just have one, one concern. We keep saying harmful algal blooms, when in fact, we have a lot of problems promoting the county, as, as Bruno said. You know, the exposure to Clear Lake conveys a risk that really is not proportionate to the problem. My concern is that we keep saying algal, and because algae is necessary and important to the food web, for the most part, with the very rare exceptions, it's not a harmful living thing. What is harmful is cyanobacteria. This is my personal campaign, I've, I've been asking people for the last 20 years, basically, to stop saying harmful algal blooms, because it's confusing for the public. And how you, how you could deal with that, I'm not sure. I mean, if you could say harmful bacterial blooms, that would be more specific and clearer, even if it's a couple of more syllables. But I really want to put that into your thinking about how we, you know, deal with this problem that we have on the, on the economic development side, where, you know, the, the folks that are trying to solve these problems are, are talking about how bad it is for our economy. But I think that the public needs to understand the difference, and if we could promote that, I think it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Yes, please.
Betsy, thank you so much. It's, it's wonderful to hear your voice, and I appreciate that comment a lot. I will say that we have just kind of traditionally rolled along with what the CDC calls them. And I think you raise a lot of good points, and we'll have an internal discussion, I don't want to speak for everyone or make a decision on the fly, but I, I think that what you're saying makes a lot of sense.
Any other level of comment on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board if there's nothing further. I think this is a presentation, so, yep, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for coming and give us, giving us the insight. Sarah, thank you as well, and we're looking forward to, to what's next, Phase Two, right? Yeah? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let me see, there we go. Next is our 6.6, Consideration of Recommendation from Health Services Department Regarding Participation in the Clear Lake Cyanobacteria Task Force. Just making sure I say that right, Betsy. Yes, I could, I could take up another item for the time being, and we'll go ahead and do that while you're, while you're.
How about 5.2?
So we'll take up 5.2, which is the Adopt Resolution Approving Amended Agreement Number 25-0002-011 SF with the State of California Department of Food and Agriculture for the Insect Trapping Program in the amount of $35,460 for fiscal year '25 and '26. Catherine?
Hi, good morning, Board. Catherine Vanderwal, Agricultural Commissioner. Thank you for pulling that item. It was brought to my attention. I inadvertently put the word amended agreement on the resolution, as well as the memo. So this is a new agreement for fiscal year '25, '26. The amount still remains the same, as well as the terms. So your board would just be approving a new agreement, not an amended agreement.
Any questions? Public comment? I will open it up for public comment. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that, we should offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered, and?
Has amended.
Has amended. All right.
All right. Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rosmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. That resolution passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We ready yet, or? Okay, we will go back to our 6.6, and I'll just read it one more time, so we're, we're in order here. So Consideration of Recommendation from Health Services Department Regarding Participation in the Clear Lake Cyanobacteria Task Force. And we have, what's that? I heard her say something. So we have Craig Wetherby and Sarah Ryan here to present on this item.
Well, I guess we'll get started. As we pull this up, I am Craig Wetherby, Director of Environmental Health. I am joined by the ever-amazing partner, Sarah Ryan from the Big Valley Tribe. Before we get started, we do got everything going, I just want to thank Sarah and the tribes for the work that they're doing in this. Without the, the monitoring work that Sarah and her team are doing, the county would be absolutely blind to what is a very dangerous situation. No, our lake is not horrible. I don't care what people say. Our lake is amazing. Our lake is a living creature. It's its own entity, and just like any living creature, it's got good days and bad days. Sometimes our lake wakes up with its hair in a big old tangle and needs a little more time, all right? So we're going to talk about a very specific topic, right? Cyanotoxins, right? I agree, harmful algal bloom does sound a little bit all-encompassing, and it is way more concentrated than that. Cyanotoxin is the danger that we're talking about here today. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to start the presentation, and then we'll talk a little more specifically on some of the things that we're asking in terms of what we ask the board to help us with.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, Supervisors, and some of you have been around for a little while, probably remember that the, this work group presents to the board approximately once a year to give an update on what's going on with cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins in the lake, and to report on the work group. I'm calling it work group as opposed to task force, just to clarify, there is a Clear Lake Cyanobacteria Task Force, which is something that Big Valley Bandapoma Indians and Elym Indian Colony developed back in 2014, when we first started monitoring the toxin levels in the lake. And thankfully, because of the hard work of everybody who's been involved, we no longer, we don't meet on a regular basis, because there's so, so much of the work that we are trying to start in terms of research, funding, signage, communication, collaboration, all of that is happening right now. So this work group, however, is something that the board asked to be set up a number of years ago, I believe around 2018, just to make sure we were all on the same page. Because, you know, Big Valley is putting out the toxin data, it's something that the tribal council said, yes, please do that, communicate, you know, the, the information that the state has on cyanotoxins, and put it out there as a transparent, informative piece of information. And so there's no questions about that, and then, and so we have been doing that, and thankfully, this work group has come together and has been meeting periodically over the years, a multi-jurisdictional, multi-agency work group that is communicating and collaborating on the issues and is keeping up with it. So in terms of this presentation, just as we've done in previous years, do a little bit, talk a little bit about cyanobacteria impacts, the progress that we've made together as a group, and also current lake conditions. Next slide, please. And again, it's, it's really so that we can be proactive, we can be informed and educated. I truly believe with all the education that we're doing at Big Valley about cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins, I am amazed at the level of conversation that is happening online and in meetings, where I believe we have a pretty educated group of, you know, community members, the county members, about the issues. And, and, you know, years ago, when it first started, you know, people were calling it the wrong name, and they were jumping to conclusions, there's still some of that going on. I try to find it, search it out on Facebook if I see it, and, you know, and I know others are as well. We're trying to educate people, so not to be scared of cyanotoxins. This is a natural lake, as, has been said, but we need to be proactive and just aware of the potential risk and, you know, face it head-on. And I believe that's what this work group helps does, helps do. And, and we also try to be on the same page. So as I said, the tribe is putting the data out, and it's, it's great when, you know, it's, once the, you know, the county gets a lot of phone calls, I'm sure, you know, Water Resources and Environmental Health probably gets a lot of phone calls on it, the two cities do, and they are members of this work group, and are, you know, we stay in touch with each other about the trends and everything. Okay, next slide, please. So cyanobacteria, that is a picture, a microscopy, microscopic picture of Diluchus bermum, which is one of the main cyanobacteria in the lake. It does not seem to have toxins, though. So it's, I think it's quite beautiful, looks like a pearl necklace to me. All cyanobacteria are capable of photosynthesis, that's what kind of confused people, and that's why they called it algae so many years ago. It is a bacteria, as Betsy was saying in the previous presentation, and it rises up and wants, you know, gets sunlight, and it eats the food that's in there, eats the nutrients, all the nutrient problems that we have in the lake, and then it goes back down each day. So you, that's what it looks like in lakes and creeks, it looks very different, you can't see these blooms. They do produce oxygen, so all of us who are out there doing water monitoring, we see high dissolved oxygen in these areas, and also high pH. I've seen a pH of over 10. It's supposed to be around seven, you know, and, and actually, the standards for the lake for recreational exposure is 6.5 to 8.5. So we are getting way off the charts in terms of pH, which could be one of the reasons why people have some skin issues with it, just because the pH is getting so base, basic. Cyanobacteria, as has been the messaging of the county for, for, you know, since the beginning, it's, you know, it is a natural, one of the oldest organisms, and it helped create the oxygen for the, for, you know, what we breathe. However, when there's too much, and there's a bloom, and it looks like pea soup, or you have toxins, that's when it's problematic. It's not something that's eaten by fish, so we can't really just assume that it's going to be taken care of in the food web. And when it dies and it goes back down, it just becomes food again for a new year of cyanobacteria. They do seed themselves, so that's, it will keep coming back until there are solutions to actually get the, get it out, you can either control it as it's blooming, or get it out of the bottom of the lake. Next slide, please. So harmful algal bloom, again, it's not an algae, but this is the term that's used nationally, and I have a problem with it too, because it's not algae, but habs is the term, and that is when we have, there's an overgrowth of it. So when we're out there doing our monitoring around the lake, and Big Valley goes twice a month, in the summer months, we look for, is there a visible bloom, is it green, you know, is it slightly green, is it a mat? It all depends on which cyanobacteria there is growing there. They all have different looks, different smells, different toxins they can produce, and sometimes it's a combination of them, and the only way to really tell is to look under a microscope, and the only way to know if it has toxins is to send it to a lab. Their toxins can be present even when there's no cyanobacteria, and the way that happens is, I always like to say, cyanobacteria is like a water balloon, and the toxins are the water that's inside. So if the, if you break that, you know, if you lice the cell, if you kill it with an algicide or something, or it's dying in some other way, the toxins spill out into the water, which is why the drinking water systems that are, you know, serve 65% of the county have to do various levels of filtration before they do chlorination, because chlorination will break those cells open, and then you have to deal with the toxins, which are much smaller, much harder to get out, so it's better to filter them out. So again, toxins can be present without visible signs of algae or cyanobacteria, and it's not the same as green algae. Green algae, you put a pencil in the thing, you lift it up or stick, and if it's hanging off like, like vegetation, that is green algae, that's good, that's what fish eat, that's, it's a good part of the food web. Cyanobacteria is more slimy, you try to pick it up, you try to skim it out, and it's a slime bath, it's not, it's not vegetative. Yeah.
One of the ways to describe it, and we get a lot of complaints each year, a lot of phone calls, people will call and say that somebody just dumped five gallons of paint in the lake, so it looks like latex paint floating on the surface. And it has that level of consistency, and that it's a key distinction between an official algae and cyanobacterias.
Yep. And that is, the turquoise paint one is famazaminon usually, and that can be a toxin producer as well, but doesn't seem to be in the lake. And again, there's several genera that are, that are dominant in the lake, and Diluchus bermum, famazaminon, they don't seem to be problematic. Microcystis is a problematic one. Next slide. So work group stakeholders, you know, these, over the years that we've been meeting, we've had, the, Lake County has had environmental health, water resources, just the health, health services. City of Clear Lake and City of Lakeport have sent people, oh, the county also has a drinking water, the special districts folks, and then Big Valley is, is present. We've had the, just other groups over the, you know, over the years, but this is kind of the, the key folks at this point.
At some points, particularly last summer, we had up to 20 participants in the work group from state down to local. We had active voices at every level participating, and it's, it's hard to keep that group focused on one topic. We tend to wander a little bit, but the point of bringing this up is to show that the work is not just being done in an echo chamber, right? There's not just a couple of people sitting there going, yeah, we're doing great. No, this is going out, this work is being done, and it's going to the state. They oftentimes come back to us to look at how we're putting these meetings together, and they're very proud of the work that we do. We're very proud of the work that we do. I know our group, each and every member of the group puts a lot of effort into making sure they understand the science of what we're dealing with, and it's specifically that science that we're trying to use to make better decisions, better communications, more educational materials. Thank you.
Thanks. Next slide, please. So, and as you probably know, and it's certainly been said here before, it's not like just Clear Lake has the issue. If you go on to, the state has a, has a map, and I think it's probably the next slide, but this, anybody who's doing any cyanotoxin monitoring, they have a mywaterquality.ca.gov is, is where you can go on and look at all of the, all of the blooms, you know, and toxin levels throughout the state. But even, it is a worldwide issue, we certainly see some pretty bad pictures, and also hear about really high toxic levels in other countries. You know, pretty much anybody with a, with a shoreline that has a lot of development on it, you're going to see some sort of situation like this. This is Upper Klamath Lake, and that bloom is, you know, also visible by satellite in terms of the pigments that it produces, these things can be picked up by satellite. And so we can see that, you know, throughout the, throughout the world, cyanobacteria and cyanobacteria is an issue, an overgrowth of it. It should be there, it should be a part of it, but it shouldn't be dominating the system, because then you have all these other negative impacts. Next slide, please. Here's that picture I was talking about, so if you go to my quality, my water So if you go to myquality, mywaterquality.ca.gov, you can see, it is focused on Clear Lake there, but throughout the state where you see, you know, we try to keep the colors. So if it's, if it's green, that means it's not, it doesn't have toxin levels that are problematic, could be even non-detect. Yellow is caution, so it has toxin levels of a certain level, basically 0.8 to 6 micrograms per liter of microcystin. Orange is warning and red is danger. Each one of those levels has associated recommendations of risk and basically recommended not to do certain things. So if that danger levels, it's, it is recommended to not be boating in that area because of the spray that happens and the aerosolization of the toxins. And with, with caution, you're, it's recommended you don't eat any shellfish from the area. So there's a host of things. But yeah, statewide, there are a number of lakes that are monitored and their data is all on that website. Next slide, please. As, as we've all been saying, the potential impacts, of course, the economic development is one of the biggest ones because people do react to information and they also react to what they see. And so that's why it was decided, you know, the discussion was years ago, if we hit it face, you know, if we hit it head-on and we're transparent about it and we talk about all the things we're doing, and there's even more that we're doing now, all the Blue Ribbon Committee nutrient management projects and all that, then people can make an educated, you know, decision about, I'm going to use a lake, I'm just going to go to this spot, I'm going to go to this spot. But just having blooms is, can be problematic. Of course, public health issues, there have been a number of studies done on, you know, whether toxins are in the drinking water and we do find them in the small, in the small private systems. There are, you know, potential illnesses, utilities have to deal with just filtering that stuff out. And, you know, fish and aquatic life, they're, they are working on what those levels are at which they can impact, the toxins can impact the fish and wildlife. But also when they die, when the blooms die off, the oxygen level drops and it can lead to fish kills. And so it's not because of the toxins, it's just because of water chemistry.
One of the keys here is to talk about the transparency. That's the ultimate goal of what we've been told the board wants. We're about educating the public, we're about informing them when there is a hazard present. We always try to be mindful of the fact that, you know, we are a county that has economic interests. We have people that have businesses, lives dedicated to how that lake is functioning and how it's being used or recreated on. But at the same time, it's about giving the public the information they need to make a decision for themselves and their families. It's about making sure that we are giving them appropriate information. What I say by appropriate is we have a number that we can hang our hat on and say, yes, this is dangerous or this is a caution, you should be aware of this. And making sure that it's somehow palatable by the community, they can understand it, they know what the, where to find it. It's, all the work that we're doing is about making sure that people know what the hazards are and they can make their decision for what their level of risk comfort is.
And this is all linked to toxicology studies from the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment as part of Cal EPA, World Health Organization studies. And data has been collected over a number of years and also ranges that are considered acceptable for, you know, various activities. So these are all just using existing standards and recommended action levels. Next slide, please. So moving into health impacts, oftentimes you'll see, yeah, so I think some of what that dog is wandering through is probably azola, which is what we have on the lake in a number of places and, and the keys, like if you go to the Clear Lake Keys right now, it looks like a, like a rug, but that's, that stuff's fine. Azola is just this tiny little plant. It's creating nitrogen in the water. It's actually keeping cyanobacteria from blooming because it's covering up that sunlight and preventing the cyanobacteria from going up and down. So there's some strategies that we can have where it's actually, you know, we can, we can kind of control the water and manipulate it in such a way, like, don't remove these things, let's focus on aeration and other things that, that help.
What was it called again?
Azola, also known as mosquito fern.
Okay.
So, okay, next slide, please. Yeah, and if you go to the Keys right now, that's what it looks like from Highway 20. But I look at it and I'm like, yay, maybe they need a little aeration in there, but azola's good. So it is really hard to confirm for sure whether someone got ill because of cyanotoxins. It could be because, you know, they were out swimming in the lake, they went to a picnic, they were out swimming in the lake, but they also ate some potato salad. It could be the potato salad, you know? So when a person-
It's probably the potato salad.
It could be the potato salad. So I, you know, and people like to blame the lake or blame, you know, Lake Mendocino was just on, everybody was blaming or saying something about a dog death in Lake Mendocino and I don't think they've been able to confirm that it's toxins. There were no toxin level, the toxin level is no detect. But it is hard to test people and so what the, what the illness working group at the state does is they look at the toxin levels in the lake, they look at the people's symptoms and they make a, make a designation of that. So it's no simple, hey, just, you know, let's do a blood draw. Also, the state and our working group has been sending out to medical and veterinary professionals a letter saying, hey, if you see these symptoms, you know, it's already information that's available, resources. And so it's, it's really good to continue to communicate that because if they don't, if they make an assumption or they don't test at all or they don't check on things then and they don't report it and then, you know, we have a lack of information. A lot of under-reporting going on and research is ongoing about how to, to best, best determine whether someone has been exposed.
So two very important points here is, the first is the reason we're putting these informational pieces out to the veterinarians every single year, same thing with the ER doctors. I mean, obviously they've got a lot on their mind, they're doing a lot of work. Every year, it's important to get this information in front of their eyes as a refresher to them to say, oh, it's time to start looking for these symptoms. It's time to start asking the question, have you recreated in the lake recently? They explain maybe a rash or something like that. If they don't report it, we don't know about it. So it's really difficult. In terms of what, unfortunately, every single year, it seems like we get a case of a family pet that's passed away. And it is incredibly tragic and that is not good for anybody. The problem is, is that it's assumed that it was because of Clear Lake. It was because of a harmful cyanotoxin. It's really difficult to actually get a clear definition as to what caused an animal to expire. It could be dehydration, it could be a lot of things. And the only way we really have to do that is to do an autopsy, which involves sampling the liver after a fatality. Obviously, most people don't want to give up a piece of their liver for, while they're alive, go figure. So we can't test them that way. It has to be post-mortem. And that is a really difficult conversation to have with the family after they've just lost a family member. It may be a four-legged family member, but that's still the same to them. And to ask them to give up that family member for an autopsy is an extremely difficult thing to do with those folks. And it is very important that we continue to do that when we can, in the most respectful manner we can.
Next slide, please. So this is from the, I'm sorry, I don't have the URL on there, but this is the illness work group, which is made up of folks from CDPA, Department of Public Health, Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment and Water Boards, and maybe some others, are tracking illnesses and these are confirmed illnesses. And the way they've confirmed it is the symptoms, the onset of the symptoms, the, the water quality data that is, that is present. And you can see Clear Lake, you know, has human and animal. And, and, you know, frankly, I bet all of these counties do, they just don't do the monitoring. Yeah, I'm sure most of those counties do, but they just don't do the monitoring. And so there's no data and they can't, it's a big guessing game. Next slide, please.
I know too, you mentioned about the animals in the lake. I was at the dog park in Nice recently and there was a king corso, big giant guy. And the, the family that had the dog was mentioning to me that, be careful when you take your dog to the lake, you know? At first, we thought it was the lake that made him sick, but he actually ate one of the dead carp or something like that on the shore and it was a bacteria that almost killed him. But other folks, you know, may not have looked that far and figured out that it, that just assumed it was the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that, just to give an example.
That's exactly the fight that we're fighting because people will make an assumption based on a lot of things, right? The azola on the surface looks like cyanotoxin, right? It's not, but to just an average person driving by, it's, you know, let's say, let's pretend they're doing the speed limit, 45 miles an hour. It looks like cyan, so they're going to make the assumption that whatever's happening on the shore, the dead carp, you know, the sick dog, is happening because of that. Doesn't necessarily always pan out that way. And just as a general rule, whether you're a dog or a human, do not eat the dead carp. Okay? Just putting that out there as a health advisory, that's a free one. Do not eat the dead carp on the shore.
Could that have also skewed the, the orange for the illness? Do we know for sure that it was-
Yeah, those are confirmed.
Confirmed?
Yeah, okay. There's plenty of, matter of fact, we just got a, an update from the illness working group about the illness reports that the group is track, the illness work group is tracking and, you know, Clear Lake is on there several times and several of them have already been identified as not hab-related, you know? And so the work group, like I said, they check when the symptoms happen. And the symptoms are for microcystin, gastrointestinal distress and flu-like symptoms, which is why I'm like, it could be the potato salad, yeah. So there are other symptoms that, when the illness work group talks to the people, they get everything and these are, you know, health professionals. So that map is the confirmed illnesses. And it is about 10% of the, all the illness cases in the state are from Clear Lake. So it is the largest natural freshwater lake in the state, so I'm not surprised. It also is very popular, well-recreated and, and it's also, you know, there's a lot of education about, you know, go to the doctor when you're feeling sick and, and that is probably, you know, it's under-reported in other areas, I'm sure. This slide, there's just, you know, there's great, there's information for physicians that does get sent out by the state and also, you know, hopefully our work group or health services and/or water resources. And it's all supported, it's a network of information, just like the ONE Health Program that, you know, the county was doing for a little bit. These are all, you know, health professionals that, and governments that are working together to communicate information. Next slide, please. And what, these are actually also on Big Valley's website, the Clear Lake Cyanotoxin page for, on Big Valley EPA. And, you know, so there are possible symptoms and signs and other information for physicians. And these are, you know, known symptoms and signs that are related, potentially related to cyanotoxins, cyanotoxin exposure. Next slide, please. So there, you know, the, when we're talking about public health, it's really, it's, this program of cyanotoxin monitoring and multi-jurisdictional collaboration has been to communicate the information. And these are the groups that, you know, we've had a number of groups that have been a part of it. And, you know, and also the letters, press releases and public service announcements, these are all things that the county's been doing for a number of years to continue to communicate what's going on with cyanobacteria and cyanotoxins. You know, there's several places on the lake where the toxin levels have never been above, have never been even at caution. Rodman Slough is one of them. That side of the lake, good job, whatever you guys are doing, you know, even though that's where all the sedimentation is coming in, right? But there's, there's some great parts of the lake that seem to never have issues and other parts where it's a little more challenging.
You notice the tulies are on that side, like a lot of that front load right there and that makes a big difference.
It seems to, yeah, it seems to. And it's also challenging in the lower arm because that's where the big drain is, that's where the dam is and, you know, the flow into Yolo.
The culprit of the issue is clear from the problem.
Yeah. Well, you know, and we're sending gifts to Yolo County every day and, you know, it's a good thing. No, just kidding. Did you have some?
Just a point about the tulies, I mean, who'd have thought that, you know, tulies, a, you know, a species that, pretty important to our lake, would continue to be part of the solution to our lake? Actually, all vegetation is helpful, even the weeds are helpful to a degree, right? It's important that, you know, whatever work we do in this lake always takes into account, you know, the natural biota of this lake, the species that have been here for 4.5 million years or even 3.5 million in the case of the tulies. We need to keep those things around because they are part of the solution. They are not the problem at all and they're going to help us, big time.
They actually compete with the cyanobacteria. They all eat the same stuff, phosphorus and nitrogen. And so it's better to have weeds than cyanobacteria, I mean, at least in most uses of the lake. That's why I was like, azola, keep it.
Azola. It seems to be the only thing I can catch in the lake when I go fishing is the weeds.
And that's a very important experience.
Next slide, please. These are just the signs that you might be seeing around town, although the county invested in these beautiful signs that communicate cyanobacteria issues. There's pictures, local pictures, there's a QR code that links people if they use their smartphone back to Big Valley's website with the data on it. And, you know, if there's, what you can see with this caution warning danger signage, which is supposed to also be put up at the, the monitoring areas when we're in those levels of toxins, it does identify through tested pictures, icons of, which is recognizable, should be recognizable for multiple different language speakers, that what is recommended and not recommended. So those are, those are things that are, that this messaging is used throughout the state. Next slide, please. Work group has been working on a number of things over the years. As I mentioned, well, signage is one of them, is that, you know, we share the signage updates and the toxin updates as, when we meet. We make sure that there's enough support for those who are sharing information about it. So do the cities need some pamphlets? Do you have the signage to put up? And basically, over the years, we were working out the, the, just any weaknesses that we have in how we communicate and, and share the information to the public. And, you know, even the work of the, all of the nutrient monitor, nutrient management projects that are coming up, like the LG Sonic and the Hypolumineic Oxygenation System of UC Davis, these are all things that, we, we do talk about these from time to time and just like how, you know, if we, whether we're seeing toxin levels, you know, where you have some of these mitigation measures happening. So now that they're finally starting to happen, we're, and, you know, City of Clear Lake even has some aeration off their shoreline, so we're, we're looking at that and discussing it together. Also, we are used to getting reports from water resources or health services about how many people are calling in, asking about the blooms. So it's just a way to track, you know, the level of interest and concern of the public. Next slide, please. So here is the page where you can see the, where you can go straight to the toxin data. We just got our July 11th results, so we'll be updating that. There are two danger sites right now on the lake based on our July 11th and that is at Clear Lake Oaks and Elam Indian Colony Shoreline. There's also several warnings. You can see that upper arm, there's usually a lot of green, you know, in terms of signs. So no detect or low detect of toxins, so the upper arm continues to be a great place to recreate. And, you know, other areas as, summertime is tough for Oaks arm and lower arm, it just is. Next slide, please.
Before we move on.
Yeah, sorry.
So really important, this year, we're kind of getting a little bit of a, a little reprieve. Usually by this time, we have multiple danger signs across the lake. Pretty much always spanning the south end of the lake. That's kind of the natural flow of the lake and the south end always gets harder than the north end. But I just want to point out that this year, we're getting a little bit slower movement, which is good. And I am attributing that completely without evidence to the fact that we have had a lower temperature summer so far. We are still getting a decent amount of wind with that agitation and we're just not seeing the massive growth blooms that are leading to the high detects. So, hey, fingers crossed, we might actually finish this year with something a little positive to report in the next year. So just throwing that out there.
Was that, is that, could that also have to do with the amount of water, the rain we've had?
I want to say yes, but I also want to give the big giant caveat to that, which is we had a high-water year last- I want to say yes, but I also want to give the big giant caveat to that, which is, we had a wa- high-water year last year. And, um, with flood levels, and we saw very dangerous levels by June.
Okay.
Early, we had very early detects last year, so this year's not following the same pattern. Which, very important point, is why we have to continue with the, the monitoring in order to build that data set to have a better, more powerful predictive tool. I went on the record and I said that we would have danger levels by July fourth, and I was completely wrong. I'm happy about that, by the way, but.
Had it by July eleventh, though.
Yep, yeah, she had it by July eleven, so she knew what she was doing. Um, she's like, oh, you think so? I know when I'm doing the sampling. So, the point of that is, is that we have to keep trying to figure out what this model is telling us. Um, and use that tool to be predictive, because if it's not predictive, there's no point to doing it. Um, we have to come up with a reason to come up, to move these signs into danger zones. We gotta use raw numbers, and we need the monitoring to continue. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the coming slides.
Well, also, this data is used by, um, the, the mitigation groups or, uh, the projects that are, um, part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. Um, I've spoken with all of them, we report on the toxin levels on a regular basis, and this information is, uh, stuff that they use in order to either calibrate or, um, uh, you know, they're, they're just using this, uh, toxin levels. And, and, you know, we also have cyanobacteria, um, uh, tracking and, uh, other water chemistry. And so it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big body of information that is coming out of all the work that we're doing, that everybody is doing. And it's working together on things. Next slide, please. Uh, summer twenty-twenty-five, ooh, it's really hard to see. Um, three sampling events since the beginning of June. We do like to look at whether, uh, we're at caution warning and danger at, uh, in each of the arms. So that's what the, uh, that's what the, uh, tables on the right-hand side are. So we're seeing the lower arm has a caution warning and danger, forty-one percent of the samples have been caution warning or danger. Um, and the, uh, and the Oaks arm, forty percent, upper arm, eleven percent. So we track that because, you know, with US EPA's, uh, Water Quality Standard for recreational, they ha- they look at eight micrograms per liter, so it is a different number that they're using than the state does. But they're looking at recreational ability and the impacts to recreation. So we're, you know, we're tracking summertime things just to, to see when recreation's being impaired by, um, you know, by the toxin levels. Next slide, please. Um, CC HAB is a California Cyanobacteria Harmful Algal Bloom Network. It's, uh, been around for at least ten years. Um, it's a great group to be involved in. I'm, happen to be a co-chair of it right now for the last few years. But it is something that the public's invited to, the board is invited to, on, to not only present, but also just listen in, and there's some great research going on with these folks all the ti- you know, with, with our groups. We have mitigation subcommittee and a Fish and Wildlife Subcommittee and all these different things where we're looking at cyanotoxins and the impacts, and how to solve the issues, and, uh, how to communicate it, and all the good research that's out there. So I just put a plug in for California Cyanobacteria Harmful Algal Bloom Network. Next slide, please. Uh, just a quick slide on, uh, reporting a bloom. This is on the MikeWaterQuality.ca.gov. Any member of the public can do that. This is where, if you do have a dog illness, uh, or, you know, the illness, you, you know, any member of the public or any of us can put something in there, uh, and report it, and the illness work group will get back with you or also just be tracking what you do. And it's always welcome to get that information, or to submit that information. Next slide, please. Uh, I spoke about the local signage, um, it's beautiful, and it's installed in, uh, multiple places around the lake. So if people see that, um, they can use that QR code to get to the data. Uh, and also just some great factual information on there. And this is maintained, uh, the, it's, it is on city, county, and I don't think it's on any private areas. Um, I believe, I don't know if there's more signs available or if other places would like signs. Um, not every place on the lake is monitored for toxins, so it's a pretty big lake, so. Um, but we, it, the, these signs are located where the sampling is occurring. Next slide, please. Um, you can see the signage on the, uh, on this map. Couple of private properties, Lily Co., Blue Lakes, there's also, um, uh, and let's see, what other, Jago Bay, there's a private, uh, private location there, Horseshoe Bend. And I think those are the only other two sites that don't have signage, that are privately owned. Uh, oh, and Cache Creek Campgrounds, uh, or Clear Lake Campgrounds. And, uh, so cut, we do measure Cache Creek. And so there's a few sites that are not on there, they don't have signage, and these are private properties. Next slide. Um, outreach, yeah, brochures are available, um, some great work's been done over the last few years with our work group. This is all work group work, um, but getting the word out, uh, about, um, risk. And, um, brochures are in English and Spanish. Next slide, please. Uh, drinking water, uh, it's really, no time to get into this, but, you know, the, the drinking water systems on Clear Lake, the public water systems have done a great job, uh, filtering out cyanotoxins, and none of them, uh, had levels that were, uh, at an action level. They were all no detect, or detected not quantified, or just quite low. Um, and so they're doing a great job with that, and they, uh, stay in touch with the state. Um, and, you know, there's, there's no standards for drinking water for cyanotoxins yet. However, there are action levels that happen at the state, uh, and they do want, um, in, in lakes where there's a lot of toxins, they do request that the drinking water systems monitor. And so all of the drinking water systems on Clear Lake had to do that in twenty-twenty-one. And even with the highest toxin levels we had, um, to, since we've been starting monitoring, the drinking waters, the drinking water systems did a great job, um, filtering all of that out. Um, the private systems where people have their own pipes in the lake is a different story. Um, fifty percent of them had detectable toxins of the samples that we tested in, uh, in the CalWatch program, uh, drink, Tracking California is part of that. Uh, so the, the drinking waters, the private pipes into the lake, they, they, you know, and the county has done outreach on that, done a press release, you know, recommending that there, they find other sources of water at certain times of the year. Um, but the large systems that serve most people, um, are doing a great job. Next slide, please. And, you know, uh, with, with the work group, we had, uh, you know, had identified things to continue to do. Um, hope that, uh, you know, we, uh, we'll still work on these things, uh, making sure that, uh, communication is happening amongst all of the, um, the parties that are, you know, having to answer the public or doing the monitoring. Um, and we want to, as it says, manage the message, um, really try to, to ferret out the miscommunication and misinformation that's out there. And make sure everybody's got good information and make their own decisions. And, uh, always open to input from, from everybody, uh, from, from the local leaders.
So this is kind of where the work group really shines, is that we are the, we help be the local voice. The state's going to report whatever the state's going to report. We have very little control over what the state says, or what they choose to present and how they choose to present it. The work group is the local voice. It's the people who are here, who can actually physically see the lake from their workspaces, from their homes, and can actually help draft that message to the community. And it's very important that the local voice continues to be the lead voice, uh, through this process.
Yep. I think that's the last slide. And just some of our contact info. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatia, if you have questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Not sure if we have been getting an annual report, but we did this year. Um, and hopefully we will continue to get that report. I think it's important to know what the status of our lake is, where, especially as we're making attempts to do new projects, to try and mitigate and reduce the potential, uh, for cyanobacteria to bloom in such a way. Um, I, I, I have a couple of questions and, and a comment. Uh, I guess first off, let's talk about the future of the work group. Uh, I think the work group is necessary. Um, I, I want to give it the flexibility it needs to kind of be elastic in the sense of growing and shrinking as needed. Uh, I know there has been some concerns about the number of, uh, staff members that have been, uh, present at these meetings. Um, I, I, I'm okay with reducing it to what's necessary. I believe environmental health is necessary, at least that's what I'm hearing, and I'm in support of that. Uh, and if there's a need to invite a public health officer or invite others because of changes that are happening on the ground and that we need to communicate that to a greater audience, I think invites are always available to get more people in the room, but not as a, uh, continuous, uh, active member of the group. I'm okay with that flexibility and those changes. Uh, but I think the group needs to continue, and I like the cadence that it kind of slows down during the off-peak seasons and goes back to meeting more often when it's the peak season. Um, what your conversation about just what the group focuses on is, is I just want to quickly highlight, and I guess we'll kind of talk about it a little bit later, because, uh, an item was pulled off the consent agenda, is the importance of some of the projects we're working on. And the most important project, I've said it again and will continue to say it, is the Middle Creek Restoration Project. We talk about the tulies and how important they are. Well, when you strip about seventeen-hundred acres worth of tulies and marshland, which has the ability to really clean the water, slow it down, let the sediments drop in that location, where then the tulies can fight for those, uh, nutrients rather than letting it flow in the lake, you have a completely different thing. And in the report from nineteen ninety-four, the USDA Soil Conservation District or something, said that we were losing seven million dollars a year in tourism dollars because of the status of the lake. Now, if you times that by thirty-one, I think it's two fourteen, two seventeen, two-hundred-and-seventeen million dollars without CPI increase, which would be a hundred-and-sixteen percent since nineteen ninety-four. So we're looking at almost five-hundred-million dollars in potentially lost dollars to our businesses, in taxes for revenues to the counties and the cities to provide better quality of life. That is how important this situation is. Um, going back to, uh, something that I believe Ms. Ryan may have been involved in, um, because those private intakes are important, and the cyanobacteria that, hopefully, they're just using it for their lawn. Um, no, I know. And, um, there was a, a gentleman that reached out to me, and I know he was in conversations with you, at least your name came up, from Arizona, who was looking at what was called source water, which would capture water from the air and put drinking water in those houses that have the private intakes. And I believe he was talking to you about also some of the, uh, locations in, on tribal lands in the area as well. Uh, did anything ever come of that? I heard about it, I read about it, and I never saw anything, uh, uh, installed and activated. And still, the technology still exists, and it's coming out with more different types. That technology is also really interesting, especially for those private, uh, water intakes to ensure they have clean water, um, rather than trying to draft it out of the lake when it's really bad. Two thousand nine was probably one of the worst years I've ever seen here. Uh, and then two thousand twenty-one was also really bad, where we had to declare an emergency because of the drought and the amount of, uh, uh, HABs that we had in the, uh, little water that we had, so.
Yeah.
Those are my commenting.
In two thousand, and, and twenty-twenty-one is when we had the highest toxin level we've seen on the lake, at a hundred-and-sixty-plus-thousand mi- uh, micrograms per liter, which is two-hundred-thousand times higher than the safe recreating level of, set by, uh, Oeha. Um, but, uh, and two thousand nine is when we had the lingbia, the one that looks and smells like raw sewage, but nobody was testing for toxins, so I don't know what the toxin levels were. Um, yeah, uh, thank you for bringing that up. Um, there's a lot of things that, you know, a lot of projects that people kind of market and put out there, but, you know, they, they need to do the, the majority of the work because we're all pretty busy. Uh, I really can't remember what happened with that one, but I do remember talking with the gentleman, and, you know, they just, uh, should, uh, maybe come to a Blue Ribbon Committee, you know, and, and discuss options. Yeah.
Maybe I'll reconnect them, um, with Mr. Weatherby as well, because maybe as a future conversation on how to help those private intakes, um, they still need water. And I know that we were struggling, working with other water agencies to get water to those that are living on the rim of the lake with those intakes.
Well, and this is a reason to support interties to groundwater and also to, uh, well, interties to groundwater and interties, uh, and, and extending the distribution system and the service areas of the existing public water systems, who have the training, the, the treatment level, and the funding potentially, you know, to add more people on and serve them drinking water that does not have toxin levels like that, plus meets the Safe Drinking Water Act. These folks who have their own pipes into the lake, don't, you know, we've tested them, they often have E. coli in their water. Um, yeah, there's all sorts of problems with their drinking water because they're not set up, they don't have the treatment certifications and all of that to really handle it. It's very challenging water.
Private water intake is extremely challenging, right? Um, it's incumbent on the person who's drawing that water to understand what their water system is capable of. It's incumbent upon them to maintain their water system in a manner that's actually going to protect them, um, and deliver the water that they need to survive. Um, the real problem here is that water treatment is expensive. I don't think there's anybody on the board who would be surprised to hear that Lake County water is extremely expensive. Uh, and it is because of the amount of treatment that's necessary to take a surface water and turn it into a drinking water. Right? Taking a well water to a drinking water is a relatively simple process, right? Um, it's gone through years and years of filtration before it ever gets piped up. Taking a surface water always carries a risk, a huge risk. And people who are pulling that water out for their survival, for their own drinking water needs, don't always know what that system is truly needed to be. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into designing a system to deliver clean and potable water to a Safe Drinking Water Act standard. And either they don't know, or maybe they don't even have the, the money to achieve that. It is extremely expensive to maintain those private water intakes, and it's important, especially for the work that we do, to make sure those folks are receiving the most up-to-date information they can get and the most education that we can provide them to help them understand the risk. And if, if that means that they're buying bottled water to make their coffee in the morning, at least they know. Um, it's important information, and it's important that they, specifically those folks, get that information because they literally live or die based on whether they know it.
Supervisor Owen?
Just one comment on the dogs and the animals that are, that are suspected of possibly having the, the tox, that die from the toxic. I think perhaps, um, one of the issues with that is the cost to the owner of having the autopsy could, could affect that. Um, I also wanted to mention that, uh, is this a, um, committee or task force that perhaps, um, our water resource director should also be a part of? Are you a part of this? Okay, good. And then, um, I also wanted to thank you, uh, for being really proactive and notifying. I know you've notified me a number of times whether there's been an issue in my area or even a threat of an issue in our district. And I really wanted to let you guys know that I really appreciated it, and I'm sure everybody on the board does, that when there's been something, come forward, whatever it might be, that you have reached out to us. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you for the work you're doing on this.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak on this item, this presentation?
Hi, Susan Paul Yukonas with Tracking California. In addition to everything I talked about before, I led the state will, uh, State Illness Work Group for five years and was the liaison with the CDC and the National Program. So I have the picture of how important this work is, not only in Lake County, but it is truly, truly a model for many other places within the state, the nation, and internationally. Um, Sarah and I have worked on a number of scientific manuscripts together about a lot of what was being described here, most recently about the, the lake water intakes and the problems there. Um, these problems are not unique, but these solutions and the proactivity and the communication and the collaboration, they are unique. And so I just really wanted to, to call that out and emphasize it, and, um, so you all would know and express my appreciation as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we all have a guy, I know.
So, the reason we brought, one of the reasons we brought this, I'm piggybacking admittedly, um, is we want to ask the board for some guidance, um, because what we have, uh, is a very loose, hey, form this group and talk. Great, we've been talking for eight years now. It's time that we need a little guidance from you guys. And what specifically I'm, I'm gonna ask for is for you.
There was still one more guy.
Oh.
I know you're.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
He knows me, he'll just throw something.
I was gonna say, he did that intentionally. I don't take it personally. Uh, board and everyone else that's here, thank you so much for bringing this up as an issue and something that I, I was thinking about, and I'm sure other very smart people here are thinking about it. Um, one seems really obvious is that we, as humans, are only gonna do so much to change nature, right? So the ability to steward nature is really where the answers are. Starting something that will continue is a process that begins, uh, naturally, but we could steward along the process. So, point being, the tulies, um, seem like a big aspect to a long-term solution as opposed to trying to Band-Aid over smaller issues. Uh, with that, I'm thinking about the hitch. With that, I'm thinking about the hitch as well. And it seems to me like the problem with the, the algae is related to the bacteria and the bacteria is related to the tulies. And the biggest issue with the hitch is the spawning rates and the spawning rates are really based on the environment in which the, they're growing in, which goes back to the tulies, right? So, there seems like a crossover here where the answer for both of our biggest issues goes back to the tulies, right, in nature. So, with that, I'll let the people that are much smarter than I am figure out how to draw those things together, but I did want to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I'll close it and then go ahead and finish.
So, what I'm asking the board to consider today is we'd like to have you really look at what you would like this group to achieve. What are the asks and the deliverables that you would like us to work towards? It's not enough to just talk. Something has to happen. There has to be action behind talk. Otherwise, we're just talking and we're wasting time and we don't have that time. We need people to be aware of what's going on and we need to do a job. So, I'm asking you to help us define what that scope is. I'm also asking you to help define what you want us to present to you and how often you want us to present to you. And I mean, I'm asking for this in a little bit more of a formal way than just us throwing together the group and then coming at some point, I, I want to have a little more structure to what we're doing and a little more definition as to how you would like to go about doing that. Environmental health over the last two years has invested very heavily in this group. At one point, I had five of my staff workers, five out of fourteen, working on this project. Not full-time, but still a fairly significant investment for a small department with no revenue source to support this. Any work that we do in this is coming directly out of realignment funding, which as you're well aware, is very strained this year. So, we have pulled back a significant amount of time and investment. We are now working with one staff member, me, on this group at this time, but we'd like to environmental health absolutely wants to continue the work in this, but we would like to take a step back and not necessarily be responsible for the leading of this group you know, at this time while we're dealing with the budget that we are dealing with this year.
Supervisor Pisca.
I, I think we all agree that this work is really important and needs to continue, but do you have recommendations on how to proceed and what that might look like? I think that would be better, easier for us to understand rather than kind of come up with it on the fly. Because you've been doing the work, you have been developing the relationships, you know what your budgets look like. You could come back to us with a work plan and then maybe we could go from there. That'd be really helpful.
Supervisor Sumati.
Just a thought process. I'm sure I'll get some phone calls about this. It seems to be a shared burden to deal with and this is not a, which is what people are probably going to say, it's not a water issue. It's an issue of the land masses being developed in such a way that a high amount of sediment is coming into the water and impacting the water, meaning every jurisdiction has some accountability as to why the water is displaying or exhibiting what the water is exhibiting. Is it possible to, from year to year, move it to a different jurisdiction as, who is the lead? That way, it's not always burdened to one jurisdiction to hold on to that lead and feel like they are burdened with having to deal with staff time. Is that a possibility? That's something you can come back with.
That is absolutely a possibility. Anything's possible. With enough dedication, we can do anything. But it's, we, you talked about flexibility in this work group. And if, if there's anything, this group is all about flexibility, right? We meet once a month during what we call the offseason and then once we start getting those hits, we start talking every two weeks. And at some point, we were even talking every week and informally, we were talking every single day. When we were at the height, when we had that huge hit in twenty twenty-one, trust me, that was all that was being talked about. So, yeah, flexibility is absolutely key to the work that we're doing and we want to keep that flexibility. The challenge has been man-hours, you know, staffing hours. And how do I fund that across multiple people, multiple jurisdictions? Each jurisdiction has, that's contributing, I can't speak for Pawan, but I, he's nodding his head, so I think he knows what I'm about to say. There is no funding source dedicated to cyanotoxins. Any money that we spend in this realm is coming out of somewhere else, some other portion of our budget. In my case, it's realignment. I'm very fortunate that Anthony has been so kind to let me have as much money as I've ever wanted and never says no.
I think too that.
Just throwing that out there.
Might be.
Anybody who knows me knows that's not true.
Okay, so that is not true.
This may be, you might have already talked about this or tried this, but the Blue Ribbon Committee, I know it fits some of the, you know, the the details in the bylaws or in the whole initiative. It fits, the lake is the most important thing when it comes to that. It could be another committee or something like that that could be a potential funder for this, if we could see if that could be something. In the Risk Reduction Authority as well.
Are, are you offering, just so I can better understand, that the Blue Ribbon has the capacity to lead this committee by staffing it themselves?
Or, or a project to promote to try and get the funding to do that.
Right, right, right. Which would take some time, but yeah.
But it's a long-term thought.
I don't disagree.
May I mention that?
Yes.
In, in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, this is listed as a natural hazard. And so, I believe the county has identified some projects associated with mitigation with that, and so that's another potential source.
Supervisor Pisca mentioned the Risk Reduction Authority.
Yeah, the Risk Reduction Authority focuses on all risks. We do have water providers as members and I think for the tribal nations. So, that's another avenue to look at. We can get to on that agenda to talk about it too and then maybe come back with some of these plans.
I just want to say, I, I agree with Supervisor Pisca in the sense of we can come up with all the ideas, but we're also not sitting down in the same room that you are with the knowledge and understanding of what you deal with when you have these meetings or when there are high levels of toxins in the lake. And so, please come back with suggestions so we can look at it through your eyes rather than just look at it through our eyes.
I just wanted to add that I, not with the funding, but I think that those would be some great sources to be able to look at that for, for the funding of it. But for what we were saying, you were asking us for direction and coming up with a plan, well, you need the data to be able to come up with a plan and setting your goals. And I, it looks, looking like, and I don't know, that Middle Creek Restoration may be a big part of that as well. But setting your goals would be obviously to be able to reduce an effect and that's going to have to, that's going to come from a lot of the monitoring you're doing.
May, may I just also say that?
Yes.
The, the Clear Lake Nutrient TMDL that is from the Regional Board says there's a hundred years of in-lake loading and food that's already there that is cycling through this. The Middle Creek Restoration Project is going to stop a lot of, you know, the, the majority of the new stuff. However, with UC Davis's research of identifying that it's a low dissolved oxygen, the high temperatures in the lake, but basically low dissolved oxygen cycling those nutrients so that cyanobacteria is available, or cyanobacteria is, you know, growing due to the nutrients. That is not really linked to the Middle Creek Restoration Project.
See, okay.
So, it's, it is, and, and they've identified a hundred years and so that's, you know, so that's why some of these mitigation measures like the Sonic, LG Sonic and some of the other things are like handle, you know, basically trying to interrupt that feeding cycle and growing cycle. And it's very expensive and it's not feasible to do it all throughout the lake, so it's all going to be kind of worked out.
So, the, so as I understand it, the, it's not anything that's coming in as much, but you're, you would reduce the amount coming in.
Yeah.
But that there's so much already here.
Exactly.
It's looking like it's going to be difficult to mitigate. Impossible?
That's the problem. And people used to, you know, yeah, that's, that is the difficulty.
Okay.
It's the, it's the very nature of our understanding of our, our nature as it is, of our environment. Things that we used to take for granted, we now know better. We didn't have the information in the sixties and seventies that we have today. We were, we were building this problem many, many, many years ago. Today, we understand the problem better and I promise you, we don't understand the problem a tenth of what we need to, right? Today, we have some information, but we certainly don't have it all, right? Tomorrow, we're going to know more than we know today. And the work that is being done is really more about arresting the damage and taking responsibility for what we've already done and going forward and saying, okay, let's make better decisions. And here's the information we're going to hang our hat on for making those better decisions. It's at least something. Going to take a long time. There is no easy road. There is no instant, you know, thing. We can't put bubblers in the entire lake. It's the largest lake around. You can't bubble the whole lake. I mean, how much you want to. There's no amount of funding that's going to do that.
Right.
So, we got a lot of work ahead of us.
So, if you're listening and you're tuning in, please help us educate, especially when you see something on Facebook that you've learned here that isn't accurate. Please put out that information so you could help us get the message along and we can get moving on a better direction for the lake. And thank you for this presentation. I don't know if you have, oh, go ahead, Pawan, please.
Hello, everyone. It's Pawan Upadia. I'm the Lake County Water Resources Director. I would like to briefly address the comment which was made earlier about the nexus between the tulies, the Clear Lake Hitch. I just want to mention that, that we have already been doing it and the board has taken the action regarding that. Like the lake bed ordinance, which is chapter twenty-three, the tulies are protected under that. So, it's not, so if there are tulies in somebody's property, they need to call us before they take them out or like, so it's protected, the plant should not die for that. Like they have to take certain precautions, like if it is within their property and it's a nuisance for them.
Thank you for that. If you could just talk to them offline, because we, we got to move on.
Yeah. And similarly for the Clear Lake Hitch, it's, the board has declared the emergency for that and
Right.
there is like funding and research which has been supported by the board.
Thank you, Pawan. All right. Yes, just to touch base, we got to move on. We're a little behind. So, do you have what you need to move forward and come back and give us? And we can move forward on the next discussion on this. Do you think we're okay?
Yeah, we can, we'll bring back some of our recommendations as we move forward.
Excellent.
And a budget? You'd like a budget as well?
What are you looking for to support it?
Millions of dollars.
All right.
Okay. Oh, I can always ask.
I hear, I hear Anthony says yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time and letting us present to you. I know we kind of, we took a little bit of your time, but it was worth it, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move, all right. So, it looks like we have a couple of people that need a break, so we'll come back at eleven forty-seven.
Eleven forty-seven, okay.
Can we know if we're doing our one-thirty or did they, are they here?
Alright. We're coming back uh to our next item on the agenda, which is our six point seven, consideration of an update on North Lakeport flashes projects. Um, this is, uh, administration has put this together, but I see we have, uh, Ben Rickelman is here with Michael, Mr. Michael Day from Train. Or actually, Advanced Energy Project Development Leader, right, from Train. Alright, go ahead, Ben.
I was waiting outside the bathroom.
We're good. Go ahead. Okay.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As mentioned, we're here with Michael Day of Train to give an update on the Poe Mountain flashes project. We also have uh Meera Turner, Director of Community Development, if there's any questions regarding environmental review.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, I have the clicker. Alright. So, um, the first thing is, uh, so we are in ESCO. And people know about Train because we make air conditioning equipment, which we absolutely do, but we also have a contracting arm. So, uh, several years ago, the County of Lake conducted a competitive solicitation for ESCO services. ESCO stands for Energy Services Contracting Firm. Um, the idea is that an ESCO comes in, develops energy projects to solve the problems of a, of a given community. We try to bring in grants, incentives, and savings, or even revenue generation to help pay for it. And it usually includes some sort of finance. That's the basic ESCO model. Let the savings and the grants pay for a project instead of it hitting your capital fund. Um, so when we came to Lake County, the top threats uh were issues. Were the fire threat was absolutely number one. Uh, number two were the impacts of public safety power shut-off events. And then number three was just realization that there were not a lot of funds available. So the salute, so taking all those things, the, the needs and the particular characteristics of what we saw here in Lake County. We came up with flashes. So flashes is fire main linked auxiliary supply hydraulic energy storage. And this is sort of the, the process that we went through. Uh, the request for proposals released in twenty-twenty. We were selected in July of twenty-twenty-one. We entered into a letter of commitment in twenty, in September of twenty-twenty-one. We had a, an update in July of twenty-twenty-two. We did a grant application to the Pacific Gas and Electric Microgrid Incentive Program in July of last year. It was tentatively awarded uh the first part of November. And uh, but there were some issues with the contract language. And due to the, the work of, of the county council, uh, and really, uh, Matthew Rothstein, uh, Chief Deputy CAO and a lot of other staff, along with other organizations, the PUC reconsidered um, the grant award language. And just about a month ago, uh, on the twenty-sixth of June, the CPUC gave uh instruction to PG&E to go back and modify some of the problematic elements of the grant award language in a way that would make it possible for Lake County uh to go forward with the next phase. Uh, again, funded by MIP, uh, but reducing the risk to Lake County. So flashes, what is it? It's what's called a super closed-loop pump storage hydro. So closed loop in the world of pump storage hydro just means that it, you're not damming a creek or a river. Closed loop in the world of pump storage means that you can create a reservoir on top of a mountain and a reservoir at the bottom of the mountain. So long as it's not going through and damming a water course, that's considered closed loop in the world of pump storage hydro. Super closed loop says you're gonna take that a step farther and instead of doing reservoirs at the top and bottom of the hill, you're actually gonna put in roofed tanks. And that gives you two principal benefits. One is it reduces, almost eliminates evaporation. The second thing that it does though is really important, is it gives you access to a much faster permitting process through the federal government. Um, so these are roofed tanks at the top and bottom of the hill. It includes thirty megawatts of solar photovoltaic, which in this case would be located on the grounds of the Northwest Wastewater Treatment Plant on land owned by the county. It's thirty megawatts of generation uh from three ten-megawatt Pelton wheel hydro turbines. And it provides power to two substations, Lucerne and Hartley. And the purposes of this system are, on a daily basis, it creates renewable energy, stores that energy, and then releases it at times of high value to generate the revenue needed to pay for the project and much more than debt service. So it's pretty, it's gonna be pretty cash flow positive for whoever builds it. The second thing is, is that this has the ability to pick up whole circuits, or in the case of Lucerne, the entire substation, which would provide electric power from uh, from Glen Haven all the way to Upper Lake and actually a little bit south of the lake, uh Buckingham Point and coming on to the, the north shores of Mount Canocti. Now, for those of you who've been around for a little while, that's a slight deviation from what we had before. Uh, and the Hartley uh substation, forgive me, uh, covers about the northern one-third of Lake, Lakeport, all the way up to the county jail. So these are substantial areas that are being carried i- in microgrid operation by this system. For those of you had, who'd been here before, we were looking at taking on Upper Lake and Hartley Substation. But as we went through the technical review process with PG&E, it was found by PG&E that it would be much easier for them and less costly for us to route the power to Lucerne Substation. We had, and we'd actually provide more people with uh microgrid coverage by going to the Lucerne Substation than we would to Upper Lake. Um, and the, uh, and we held off from looking at Lucerne because the North Shore Fire Protection District had been looking at doing a flashes project as well. Well, that sort of came off the board uh due to some challenges uh that we ran into. But that opened the Lucerne Substation up as a destination for this power getting out to the wider grid. And it just so happened that PG&E asked us, uh, recommended that we shift the power, the power output. So now it's twenty megawatts over to Lucerne, ten megawatts to Hartley. And it's able to carry those entire areas for multiple days under the worst circumstances. Um, so the, again, it's, it's a day, on a daily basis, it will be making, storing and really, and um, storing that energy and then releasing it as, uh, as dictated by the off-taker. Uh, it will be able to provide a community microgrid during outages. And of course, it, it also provides a pretty substantial uh firefighting support. We're looking at ninety million gallons um over eight hundred feet above uh Highway twenty-nine. And so there are numerous different ways that we're looking at providing this as a firefighting resource. Uh, we're looking at sprinkler systems on the, on the area of the Northwest Wastewater Treatment Plant uh that would be able to sprinkle over one square mile of land to protect uh, which does a pretty good job of stopping flames if you're sprinkling the land. We would have uh new construction hydrants along Icoff Road in Wildlands where there are not currently any, uh, any hydrants. There would be a helicopter dip tank that would allow helicopter, the Firehawk helicopters to refill there near Poe Mountain as opposed to having to go out to the middle of Clear Lake, reducing their cycle time to anything to the west. And there would be the ability to construct a rapid refill station uh there at the off-ramp that would allow Cal Fire uh tanker trucks, uh, the water tenders to, uh, to be refilled in a minute or less. And that you could actually refill multiple of them. So there's a lot of different ways that this improves uh firefighting in the local area. Um, where we got to was that, uh, for those of you who will remember, is that we conducted an RFP for uh, for investors about two and a half years ago. And uh, we had a lot of interest from investors. Uh, it, we ultimately decided to negotiate with Brookfield Renewables and they sent the team out from New York. Technically, they liked the project, but what they ran into was that the project had not been through some feasibility study elements. So those feasibility study elements were showing that we had site control. Well, we've negotiated uh an easement option, but we haven't executed it. We haven't done the survey yet. We haven't done the, uh, the next level of civil and mechanical engineering. We haven't done soils testing and geotechnical. We haven't gone through the SEQA process. We haven't done a hydrologic study. So there are a lot of things in that feasibility study that needed to be completed before they, or as it turned out, any of the other major investors were willing to come in and pay for the completion of the plans and construction of the project. That feasibility study is several million dollars. And so, once uh Brookfield had said, we can't go forward, we can't go forward with this, we started looking for alternative ways to fund the feasibility study. That's what the application to the microgrid incentive program was about. And again, um, there were something like fifty-two applications to the microgrid incentive program. And of the fifty-two applications, um, the two Poe Mountain applications, because it goes to two substations, so it constitutes two applications within PG&E's world. Out of the fifty-two applications, they scored number one and number two. And the number three was actually Hidden Valley Lake that's looking at a nearly identical system that would protect Hidden Valley Lake and provide power to the Middletown Substation. And so those were the top three scoring applications out of all fifty-two. And uh, we were pretty happy about that. And that's able to provide full funding for all of these feasibility study items. Um, so a- again, here we are. We applied for the MIP grant uh to cover the study costs. The grant was awarded, but legal issues, and then June twenty-six. Um, one note is that interconnection engineering and costs are in a separate MIP application that's currently under development. So we'll be submitting that in December or January. We would look to have that funded um, in the early part of uh, early to late spring of next year. Uh, the good news is, is that we can get, we can complete that work in, in the timeframe that we're already looking at for this first phase of the feasibility study. And here's a, a graphic representation. So we would assume that PG&E is gonna come out in the next couple of days with this amended grant language. Assuming that that is, uh, that everything's copacetic with that, then the county would be executing a grant award agreement with PG&E at the end of August, first week of September. Um, and then the county would be issuing a contract to Train um, to uh, to basically play quarterback for all the different consultants that are needed along the way. Uh, the tranche two application would go in in December. Tranche two awards are tentatively scheduled for March. And then the interconnection studies and engineering would, would begin in May or June of next year. The feasibility study would, would be completed in late twenty-twenty-six is what we're projecting. So that's all those different things from cost estimation to engineering to soils to SEQA. Everything on the, on the tranche one feasibility study should finish up by the end of next year. And the interconnection work that would start next year would finish up at about the same time.
I have a question about, okay, so the, for the, the second MIP.
Yep.
Is there any, um, I mean, I know there's not a guarantee, but is there some sort of uh preference to, to the first tranche acceptance?
There's not a preference, but if you look at how we scored compared to the other applications, just to give you an order of magnitude. The three applications that went in in tranche one are covering little bit under twenty thousand people um, with about six million dollars worth of, of funding application. Uh, the, uh, the next six best cover about something under thirteen hundred people for thirty-seven million dollars. So our, what we consciously did in this application was that we didn't ask for money to build it. We asked for money to overcome the part that couldn't be overcome, which was the feasibility study. So that makes these extremely cost-effective compared to the other MIP applications. Now, we don't know what's necessarily in application, you know, what's in the applications for tranche two. However, all the other applications we've seen have asked them to pay for a substantial part of the construction cost. And remember that the next six best cost-effective projects after ours already got funding. So we're, we're sort of dealing with the B-team on this, although there could be new ones coming in. And again, you can't guarantee anything, but it looks extremely, it, it looks pretty dang good for us to be able to get. And, and lastly, the amount that we'll be asking for the interconnection studies and engineering is less than we were asking for in tranche one. So this will put us, at the end of next year, we'll be in a completely different place than where we are now. The feasibility studies will be complete. We will have an idea, a, a much better idea about the construction costs. We will have um several of our permits in hand. It will be ready to move on to the next phase, which is final design, engineering, procurement, and construction, EPC. At that point, or shortly before the end of next year, this board is gonna have to make a decision. You're gonna have to make a decision on how you want to move forward with the project. And there are two real ways to do it. One way is what was looking good two and a half years ago. And that's to bring in Brookfield Renewables or Sabre or any of the other dozens of, of companies that would actually like to, that have expressed interest in this project. They would put up the, the capital for the entire project. Um, the project would go forward. They would take the tax equity benefits from it. They would sell it to a load-serving entity such as Sonoma Clean Power or another CCA. They'd sell it to PG&E. They'd, they'd take care of all of that and they'd pay a fee to the county for use of your land. You'd still get all the might, the bet, the other benefits, the soft benefits in terms of keeping the lights on and having a firefighting resource. But most of the financial benefits would go to that third-party investor.
And, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. And what about the, the, the clean energy benefits that are going away?
So, very good question, and that was part of why we wanted to delay until now to come back and give you a, an update. So, some clean, some things that were, that were benefits under the Inflation Reduction Act have gone away. Uh, that's primarily solar and wind. Uh, there are a couple ways that you can still get those. If you start construction by July third of next year. If you start construction by July 3 of next year, or if you finish by the end of 2027. It's unlikely that anything on this would finish, would start construction by July 3. It's iffy on to whether or not they would be able to be constructed and placed into operation by the end of 2027. Probably not, but it's possible. However, out of the entire project, the vast majority of the cost, roughly 85% of the cost, is as a pumped hydro facility. And pumped hydro facilities were extended to 2033 before they start to ramp down. And that was very much in doubt. We didn't know how that was going to play out, but that is how this ended up coming about. So, one track, at the end of next year, you'll have what's basically an EPC-ready project that you could take, and we could rerun the solicitation we did for interest. I continue to receive emails on a pretty regular basis from people that were interested in it last time saying, "Hey, what's going on? Will this come up?" The other way is, is that the county would be able to look at owning it yourself and generating what looks like a pretty fair amount of revenue off of that. But that's a decision for a later date, but I'm flagging it that roughly a year from now, you're going to start having the data in hand to where the decision on ownership will come up and you'll have to pick one track or the other.
Is there an in-between? Or a certain percentage of?
Anything is possible.
I see this as an investment. Not sure how much we can handle all entirely on our own. It would be a completely new endeavor for us to take on. But as far as partnership, where we have a 15% stake, a 50% stake, or something, I'd be very interested in knowing what that might look like, if that's even possible.
So there are certain ways that we could do that, Supervisor Sabatier. Just as a, for example, if you have the power purchase agreement lined up with the off-taker, then theoretically, and we've talked about this with Golden State Finance Authority, revenue bonds could be issued that do not affect the county's bonding capacity or non-recourse to the county and could be secured entirely by the proceeds from that power purchase agreement. So that's something that a minor political subdivision can do that a private entity cannot. There are millions of potential permutations within there and stuff. And so, as we get closer to it, those discussions and, you know, questions from this board saying, "These are the types of things that we want to look at. Bring us options." Our job is not to decide. Our job is to figure out what you're looking for and bring you options so that you can make the best decision on behalf of the residents of this county. And that's about it. Again, we're a few days away from seeing the PG&E language come back. And then we will have a contract with you. One thing is, is that there's, under our current letter of commitment, there was a backout clause where if the county backed out, there were fees due back to Train. When we enter into this, into this new project development agreement, that obligation will actually be eliminated.
Nice. I had a question as well. Thank you for that. That was one of our concerns when we thought about it last time and made the choice. But you mentioned Sonoma Clean Power and you mentioned a couple of things. My thought process is feasibility, that's another word you used, and we are currently in that whole feasibility. They did a feasibility to try and see if we can join that CCA. And what happens considering the PG&E process for the, you know, the funding, if we sever from PG&E and go that route, does it make a difference?
Makes no, with regards to the microgrid incentive program, this is a ratepayer-funded initiative that's actually administered by PG&E but subject to the direction of the There's nothing that would, there's nothing that would impact this, particularly for the tranche one, because tranche one, you're being signed up where you're already, you know, a PG&E bundled customer, to use the language. By the time that we would sign for tranche two, you would still be a PG&E bundled customer and by the time you entered into that agreement, you'd still be a PG&E bundled customer. And then on top of that, it doesn't affect your eligibility. It does, however, change things with regards to the final project. It is easier for a CCA, which is a joint powers authority, as you are aware. Well, Sonoma Clean Power is a joint powers authority that belongs to a larger joint powers authority called California Community Power. And so it's a JPA of CCAs that does procurement. The fact that you would be within their service territory changes what they can pay for you. Or for that matter, in the service, if you joined Marin Clean Energy or Peninsula Clean Energy or Pioneer, I'm not trying to guide towards one CCA or another. But the fact that you would be within a CCA territory makes it easier for them specifically to pay capacity values to this project on a long-term basis because you're in their territory.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
Just last comment. I really want to give appreciation first off to Michael Day for being persistent in this issue. Matthew Rothstein, I know that I've had many communications with him and Chair Crandall regarding how to move forward with this situation we were in. I don't want to put out a name too much in case he wasn't critical to this, but I know that we did contact Senator McGuire in asking for us to be at the table and be able to have these discussions with the governor, with all kinds of folks that we were just trying to open the door to get changes at CPUC. So whoever and however, we were able to finally get that change. I just want to at least put out all the names again and say thank you because this was critical to be able to move forward, or else this wasn't able to move forward. This was not something we could invest in at this point in time with still such a large risk.
And Ben, too.
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Rickelman as well.
Ben, too.
And Ben as well. There is one last element to this. If these projects go forward, you know, we're probably looking at construction starting as early as Q4 2026. These are big projects. They are going to be literally hundreds of thousands of man-hours of almost all skilled labor. And with that, there's an opportunity that your staff is starting to work on to where we can bring workforce development benefits to Lake County. So we can get people into apprenticeship slots in a way that they couldn't otherwise, into a lot of the different skilled trades, and to bring that here, a workforce development element. And to be honest, the Building and Construction Trades Council was a big help at the PUC as well. So this is something that will have, there's the ability to develop a community workforce development program associated with these. You can't wait till the construction starts to get that started. It takes a while for people to go through the pre-apprenticeship program, to start into it so that they can work on these. And then after this program is over, they have the ability to work elsewhere in the county, or outside the county on projects like this and earn really good wages. And that's a really cool opportunity that just sort of comes along because of the nature of these projects.
Thank you for that, Michael. And if there's not anything else, I'll open it.
I have one more real quick question. Would there be any savings for the constituents? Possibly?
Yeah. Indirectly. So if you are a load-serving entity, whether, let's just say, take Sonoma Clean Power because they're easy. Sonoma Clean Power has a certain amount of peak power. And so every year, they have to generate what's called an integrated resource plan or an IRP. Within that IRP, they need to procure really four elements. One is capacity, which is denominated in kilowatts. And it's instantaneous energy to keep the lights on during the worst hour of the worst day of a one- and 10-year heat storm, plus a planning reserve margin on top of it. They have to show that they are procuring enough energy for that integrated resource plan, including throughout all the periods, every slice of day throughout the year. They need to show that they're procuring enough renewable energy credits. And they have to procure what are called ancillary services, things such as Black Start, ramping, and probably fairly soon, inertia. So they're, because they don't own their own generation, they're buying these from different entities and putting it together in a portfolio to meet all those needs of their integrated resource plan. If they were to contract for this project, or this project and the Hidden Valley Lake project, and they were to get it at roughly market value, it would still be better for them because they would have fewer line losses. So if they bought 50 megawatts between the two projects here, they might have to buy 60 megawatts if it was in the Sierras because of line losses and stuff like this. If they get it at a decent rate, but they're able to lock it up for a long period of time, that would, generally speaking, as prices rise, that cost would be the same for their ratepayers. And that means that their total IRP reduces in cost, and their total IRP reduces the cost to ratepayers. So that's it. It's on the marginal, on the margin. But remember that for a CCA, usually the cost of procurement of the IRP is only 30 to 35% of the entire bill. The rest of it are either non-bypassable charges or the charges from PG&E for the wires to get to an area. But to answer your question, yes, it could be helpful in that, in the longer term.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. All right, I'll close public comment if there's any last questions or comments. And then if there's anything to finish.
If I could say one last comment. Supervisor Sabatier, I think it was you during the Sonoma Clean Power presentation, you said, "How does this set you up? How does this move you along towards being your own utility?" I think that the answer here is the same as that, is that it could be a part of the answer. It's a pretty tough mountain to climb, the way that the rules are set up now for taking something that was, that's currently IOU territory and moving it that way. However, if you were ever going to do it, having a big generating asset, you know, particularly a peaking ramping asset, puts you in a different category than if you don't have that.
How did you know that was on my mind?
I listened last time. So thank you very much for your time. We'll probably be back to you in the next couple of weeks after the PG&E contract language comes out. And hopefully you'll have a contract to sign with PG&E and one to sign with Train, and we'll get started.
Michael, thanks again. I know Supervisor Sabatier said it, but just staying on task and consistent with this through all the years. We talked about it in 2020, I think it was, 2019? And like it's went through the Inflation Reduction Act. We did those presentations hoping that something would happen then, and you know, but we're here now. It's still moving forward. Thank you again. And Ben, thank you for bringing this here with Susan and whatnot. So with that, I don't know if there's anything else. I know that was a presentation, if there was direction. I don't know if there was any direction needed, but keep going. Yep. All right. With that, we'll close this portion. We do have a couple of minutes before 12:30. Should we knock something out? I know that 6.8 is it, is going to be pushed to a later date, so should I read it off? And, all right, so I'll read that one off. Consideration of a report from Municipal Resource Group on your Board's March 21, 2025 Training Workshop on General Governance, Priority Development, and Organizational Effectiveness. And this will be pushed to a later date to be determined. And so that will push that back. Let's see.
You can try 7.4 and 7.5.
All right, 7.4. Oh, actually, I'll hit, what is it, 5 point, that's part of social services as well. Is it 5.5?
It's 5.5 and it's already moved to a future date.
Okay, so that's, okay, so we're good on that. And then, so we will go for these non-timed items. Consideration of a designation or designating one member of the Lake County Board of Supervisors to serve as a member of the AAA Governing Board and another supervisor to serve as the alternate. And B, appointing Amy Shimansky, Deputy Director of Social Services, as the second member representing Lake County on the AAA Governing Board. Social Services Director Rachel Delman Parsons.
Good morning, board. Thank you. With me today is Dina Eddings. She is our Program Coordinator for the Area Agency on Aging.
Your mic on?
Hold on. Okay. Good morning. Thank you. With me today is Dina Eddings. She's our Program Coordinator for the Area Agency on Aging. And I will let Dina briefly speak to this matter for you.
All right.
Hello, thank you, board. This came up because of issues that we've had with reaching a quorum at some of our meetings. And because we are part of a joint powers agreement with Mendocino County for the Area Agency on Aging Governing Board, I wanted to stick with the same structure that we're holding right now with the Mendocino Board, where one member of their board is on the governing board, and then a second member on their board is an alternate. And then they have one social services staff member as a member of the board. And currently, that position in Mendocino is being held by the Deputy of Adult Services, which is why I suggested Amy Shimansky, who's also the Deputy of Adult Services in Lake County.
All right. Open it up for public comment. Any on Zoom? All right.
All right, so our Deputy Director, Amy Shimansky, is also online if you have any questions for her.
Did she want to unmute her?
I don't think she planned on making comments.
All right. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board, Supervisor Sabatier.
And I'm just looking at the supervisors that are currently on the AAA. I think they would know best if they feel they're still needed there, or if staff would be a good replacement for them. And I'm moving, ready to move forward with the decision made by the current appointees.
Go ahead.
We already talked about this and agreed to this, so I can go ahead and move forward.
It's basically just us and then having that other, having Amy there. We're fine with it. We talked about it at the board, so we're good.
Mr. Chair, I move that we designate one member of the Lake County Board of Supervisors to serve as a member of the AAA Governing Board and another supervisor to serve as the alternate.
Who is the alternate? Is that what you were going to ask, Lloyd?
Just to clarify, yes. Just the names of the board members who would be.
You or I would be.
Chair Crandall is the main.
And you're the alternate.
And I will be the alternate.
Does that work?
Yes, that's part of the motion.
All right. A second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Amy Shimansky, Deputy Director of Social Services, as the second member representing Lake County on the AAA Governing Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, board.
And let's see, do you think we can cover this next one? Consideration of waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to County Ordinance 3137, Section 2-38, Subsection 38.1, Extension of the Annual Agreements. And B, approving contract between County of Lake and the Regents of the University of California for training services in the amount of $339,915 from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, and authorize Chair to sign.
Yes, thank you, board. So, Social Services has contracted with UC Davis for more than 20 years to provide unique and adaptive human service curriculum in continuing and professional education for our staff. And these contracts are a one-year term on a fiscal year basis. The current contract before you is not an increase in cost over fiscal year 2425. Therefore, we do believe it falls under Purchasing Ordinance 38.1, Extension of Annual Agreements for exception to bargaining, or excuse me, exception to RFP, Request for Proposals. And we did work with county admin on verifying that. It should also be noted that we did go out to bid in 2022. We released a request for proposal. We solicited 26 nearby educational institutions, including Yuba, Woodland, Mendocino, and Sonoma, and received zero responses. No college really is able to offer comparable curriculum. It's a very comprehensive curriculum that UC Davis has been able to put together thanks to contracting with many other counties. And we certainly would not be able to provide the amount of funding necessary for one college to develop that curriculum just for us. So we're hoping your board can move forward with waiving the bidding process and allow us to execute this contract.
All right. Any comments from the board? I'll open it up for public comment. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we waive the formal bidding process pursuant to County Ordinance 3137, Section 2-38, Subsection 38.1, Extension of Annual Agreements. And do them together? Separate?
Separate.
Okay.
Or you can do them together?
And B, approve the contract between the County of Lake and the Regents of the University of California for Training Services in the amount of $339,915 from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, and authorize the Chair to sign.
A second.
All right, I'll have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we're at that time. It's 12:30.
It is. We will be returning in closed session, so you may wish to read 8.1 and 8.2.
And should I read 6.9 that it'd be a later time?
So it's essentially getting pulled to a later date, so you could make an announcement, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so 6.9, consideration of county economic development and housing initiatives. We pull to a later date, so that that's that one. And as was stated, we're gonna come back to closed session, which would be 8.1, closed session, employee grievance complaint pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957. And then 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956. 91, McSorley, for Lake County. And we will see you after closed session. All right.
Let's slow it down. Well, that's fine. Slowing it down is one thing, but causing a developer to spend extra money because we slow it down. And then we go to them and say, we want you to build more single-family homes for low income and that. And it's hard to get them to listen to us when we've been kind of one way about it. So let's try to get along with them like they're trying to get along with us. They couldn't be here. It's not a big thing. And you should voice your opinion, but keep it directed toward what's real. Don't talk about water. That's all been that's all been said a long time ago. They have their own water. They don't need water from Butts Canyon or anything. And if they wanted to, they they could take water from there and pump it somewhere else. Caliomi does it every day. They have they have a well somewhere and they pump it to some another parcel. Well, that's the way water works. The water department doesn't sit over the aquifer and pump it straight up. It has to go across land, your land, my land, other people's land.
Somebody's.
Don't don't hold them to a to a standard that you're not gonna hold everybody to.
But there again, I think that this particular, and I think that's what we really are talking about here, is this particular meeting is to approve the EIR strictly for the fire safety.
Exactly.
And I do know that on the general plan, somebody mentioned something about a fire, there is a fire substation that is built into this. And they're they're creating their own fire department down there. And they're making major donations to Cal Fire for support. And they're also gonna, it's also gonna mean extra money for Cal Fire here in South County. We are actually gonna get, I think if I remember Paul correctly, we're gonna be getting even more equipment to be able to fight fires, et cetera, here as well. So it's it's actually a big asset there. So I do know that they do have that built into the plans already. I'm still caught up on the same thing that I've been caught up on before. And that is Middletown and Gwinoc and Hidden Valley all have the same issue. We got one or two ways into the county. We got one or two ways out of the county. And that's our major. And if you were here during the 2015 fire, which I was, you know, that we had cars, people exiting, trying to get out Butts Canyon, trying to get out, even to Middletown there for a while, when the fire was crossing the road. Cars were burning on on the roads. Really, the only way out was to go north. And so that that to me is a really, and it has been. I mean, Hidden Valley, as much planning as went into that, has a whole third of its community that has one way in and one way out. And that does not exit onto 29. It simply exits back into Hidden Valley, onto the main road that takes you out to 29, which was already closed down. So that is that is one of my concerns. And I know at one time there was talk about running another road. I mean, they could build roads. They got money to build this project and develop this project. They got money to build roads. And I don't know that this EIR is really addressing it to that extent. To answer other questions that I've heard the hints and allusions to, I do agree that I would like to see more availability of counties' ideas as to how they're master planning out Middletown. We really don't have a good hands-on interest in how that is playing out. And at the next math meeting, I intend on bringing up that issue to come up as a discussion item for one of our town hall meetings. Monica is going to join us, and we're gonna bring in the maps and everything that's been going on. But I think the main discussion that we're gonna discuss is how can we better open communication lines between us as a collective or collective community with the county of supervisors to make sure that they're following up. We have our planning commissioner. We have our supervisor. They're just one votes on a council. We need everybody on board up there, and I think that that's gonna take a joint effort with everybody. Okay, Julia?
Let me hear other people, please. I have to say, I am extremely frustrated. I'm a resident of downtown Middletown. And in my backyard, there is going to be a massive cohousing dormitory development situated there for at least 300 people. Okay, this is so not cool. And the fact that there is no, I mean, isn't this environmental? Isn't this part of our environment that we're gonna plonk a big facility right in walking distance of downtown Middletown? That's gonna take away our access to, you know, egress, ingress, egress. It's gonna take away our, you know, convenience of shopping at our local grocery store. It's gonna take away as possible social services, senior center usage, et cetera, et cetera. That when those people are no longer working there, where are they gonna come? They're gonna try to compete with us for housing in downtown Middletown. Well, this is just so not okay. Now, we have written two letters, detailed letters, you know, naming the development to the Middletown site and so on, to the the supposed person who's supposed to be responsible for this at the county.
Julia, we're talking about the fire here.
Excuse me, all we get back, you've talked a lot. Okay, all we get back, all we get back from them is a, we've got your letter. That's it. We're not getting any response to our questions. We need to sue these people.
Ms. Bono, there Dr.
You wanna talk about activity that we can take? We need to sue these people on behalf of the people of Middletown and the affected businesses of Middletown and nonprofit centers. Listen, you know.
Are you done?
No, I'm not. Will you shut up, please?
Will you please get on to the topic? The topic is the fire.
This is the environmental, environment and fire of Middletown.
Control. It is addressing the only the fire portion of the Environmental Control Report that was.
I'm addressing lack of response.
I know you're doing other things, but we aren't doing that, and we're not presenting that.
Okay, well, this is important. When is this going to be dealt with? I think people here would like to know.
We've already.
Everybody I have talked to who lives in Middletown is concerned about this.
We have already talked about that in general and the and.
When was this talked about?
And voted, and that's where we issued this letter.
When was this talked about?
March 20, what was it, 24?
My first letter was dated May 2nd.
24, okay.
No, second letter.
This 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 topic is, I'm gonna continue to interrupt, and I wish you would sit down so that I don't have to do this.
Was dated September 3rd, 2024. No response. Second letter dated May 2nd, 2025. We would like a response.
Would you please curb it?
You know, no.
Okay.
I live here. You don't. Okay, and this is in our backyard, and we're concerned about it. So we would like a response, and we don't wanna be shut up. We don't wanna be kept being quieted by you. Okay, this is outrageous. This is indecent. This is not okay.
Okay.
What I would recommend to any Middletown residents that are unhappy with the processes is to email the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, direct.
Correct.
Within the next 24 hours, right?
Pam?
Yes, ideally within the next 24 hours. You want that to get to them in advance of the meeting.
Am I on the, am I on the mic here?
You are on the mic.
Okay, all right. Well, my main issue is.
Please, please state your name. Please state your name.
Christine Bernard. And I live out in Jerusalem Grade, and I'm kind of concerned about the water. And to say that it's gonna come out of a aquifer, we're all getting out, we're all losing the water. And to say that you're gonna pump it out of the aquifer, well, what happens when the aquifer is dry? And ultimately, if we keep pumping, that's what's gonna happen. So I think we really need to talk about related, I guess, checking our water and making sure that we have, we're responsible for this. And not to say, well, somebody else is pumping it out, and it's okay. No, that's what I'm, that's why I'm protesting this whole development. And that is, it's another source of of water, the use of water, and against the aquifer. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a lot of this, I agree with that. And I think if you look at the pros and the cons here, a lot of that is addressed as well. What we don't have, and that gets back to the planning, planning stuff again, we don't know what the long-term plans are to develop it. They they haven't talked about where and how they're going to work on the water supply to make sure they got enough. They aren't talking about how they're planning on developing this and utilizing and expanding on their community down there. We also have sewer issues. There's, I think there's supposed to be a sewer substation down there as well. All these things are are out there as plans on there, but we don't know anything about how the county and they are dealing with developing that and putting it in place and what the future plan is gonna be. So that's why we're talking about trying to get together to open up these lines of communication for that. So is there any other discussion that relative to the to the fire issues, Margot?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair, Margot Cambara. To answer your question and to the point that Ms. Kaplan brought up, for the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, one of the one of the things on the table for decision is whether the Planning Commission is going to recommend rezoning. Now, right now, that decision will carry on, not just for Phase 1, but Phase 2 and beyond. So as Ms. Kaplan asked, how do we ensure that we are heard and we are not ignored? I say, focus on that. Urge the Planning Commission not to do a blanket rezoning at this time. If they wanna rezone for Phase 1, okay. But Phase 2, as Co-Chair Ware said, we don't even know what they have in mind for Phase 2, Phase 3, and on. And we have concerns in the community about water, about the demand on services. Now, when I went through the materials, I was looking specifically for a sheet. It's like impact on infrastructure. And one of the items, they talk about what is going to be the impact on schools, on police, on fire service. I did not see that sheet within the project materials. But anyway, that would have been helpful to see what what is a project forecasting in terms of, is there gonna be an increase in school population and for year round or seasonally? There are a lot of questions. I, there are a lot of questions. A hundred and seventeen thousand acres. That can change Middletown area tremendously. And you are the gateway to Lake County.
Yeah.
People come in from out of the county, they see Middletown. So do you wanna be suburbia? Or do you wanna maintain the rural rustic nature that we have now in the agricultural lands? That, ah, are just, so magnetic. It's drawn us all here, and it keeps us here. Thank you.
Can you, can you just clarify, um, just for those of us who don't know, when you say they're doing zoning, specifically out there or here too?
Definitely, uh, for the project. But I, I believe, now, I've only skimmed the materials for the rezoning for inside Middletown, but I do believe rezoning is required for the, uh, workforce housing project. So-
When I sat on the, uh, the zoning committee, or we, as Hidden Valley, we made a presentation to the county for zoning for, uh, all of South County. And we showed them in a number of different places where the zoning changes they were making were not really justified by the absorption rate that was going on down here. And they went back and changed, uh, some of those zoning and, and made it more practical for what it was. And then, as soon as somebody came in that wanted to do a project, it was like automatic, okay? It doesn't comply with the zoning, but we think it's okay anyway, and they just go ahead and change it. So, I, I, to me, that's a very important thing, that I was very upset. Bramble, uh, happens to be the one in question. There's not supposed, or there wasn't supposed to be any commercial out there. There wasn't supposed to be any residential built out there. And, and, uh, when they came in, uh, and they, they changed that, and their intent is for housing out there and all kinds of things. And that's just a small little thing. I mean, I think Bramble can handle that, et cetera. But that's how easy it is for some of that stuff to get through and get done. I think it's very important, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Uh, about us making a comment related to the zoning changes and how it's accommodating it. Why are they changing it?
And then, math, this is a test of our general plan and your local area plan. If we want to have, um, Lake County and, and Middletown area to have a certain kind of lifestyle and a certain kind of appearance, then we have to make the general plan and the local area plan work for us. And adhere to what the rules are now. Thank you.
So, with all due respect, Lisa Kaplan, again, I wanna just respond to, uh, my friend Fletcher. Um, they listened, but the, that was it. And the, it's the follow-up that matters. Not, you can listen all you want, but if you don't do anything, then that's all you did, was you get credit for listening. But it's like, next, you know? I know that, uh, Bill and Gail left, and they have really good reasons for leaving, because of Gail's health. But, but the truth of the matter is, is that helicopter thing, all the people o- over at Calpine when we spoke, like, there are ways to work together. You limit, you can't just go, no, we heard you. It's like, okay, we'll limit it to eleven AM and three PM, or whatever, something that works for the residents. You don't ha- it's not a yes or no. It's a how. How do we do it so that people are happy? And that requires a conversation and like real meeting. And it's not like, like, I don't care if the EIR costs them two hundred thousand dollars, because the impacts here in Middletown are gonna affect each of us who have a home to sell of, with at least that much money. So, it's like, you know, I don't care about them, I care about us.
Ooh, we, we have a s- comment from the chat in Zoom that I'm gonna read, just as soon as I turn this. I think that's better, yes, much better. Okay, um, Angela A. Uh, states that page fifty-one of the appendix H1 wildfire and evacuation assessment says twenty-five percents, percent of the residents and guests will be evacuated by plane or helicopter. Estated to be, estimated to be over twelve hundred trips. Is this really feasible?
That's a good question.
Good question, right? Thank you, Angela.
Will be evacuated by-
Plane or helicopter.
Copter or plane or helicopter. And that's page fifty-one. Margot, I believe you have, uh, yeah, you have that page fifty-one of the appendix H1.
I have the staff report.
Oh, you just have the staff report, okay. So that would be a different, different document that they can also access through the Lake County uh, planning commission or Board of Supervisors? Planning Commission, okay, yeah.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, there you go, for the website.
By the way, Laura Hall.
Thank you, Angela, for your comment.
Thank you.
Cause I'm unable to download the EIR.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, I think Monica wanted me to bring up a couple other things that, uh, we, uh, just to make note of, and that is the, this zero emissions meeting that the county is trying to set up. The Zero Emission Vehicle Plan, Infrastructure Plan, uh, is also Thursday, and they're meeting at five o'clock in Clear Lake?
Clear Lake.
Or in, uh, Lakeport? And then, uh, hm?
I thought it was Clear Lake.
Is it in Clear Lake?
I believe it's at, um, I think it's in Clear Lake at five thirty PM.
At what?
It's on, uh, Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
This is for the infrastructure, yeah. We just got this email.
Just got it. Okay, and then, on August seventh, uh, there is a community meeting here that has nothing to do with math, but, uh, Caltrans is going to be doing an open house and discussing, uh, the plans and changes that they intend on doing to twenty-nine and Middletown, and how they're gonna be making all their modifications and what, what's going on on that plan. And staff report. Should be, should be a good report. Uh, something that, uh, the math board has been working on Caltrans to do for quite a while. Uh, and I think that's, that's pretty good, considering that Hidden Valley's been trying to get them to do some stuff out there too for even longer than that. So, you know, we, we haven't managed to achieve that yet, so. But, uh, anyway, uh, that's also something to come out. And, and then, like I said before, we are, it is the intent to, uh, s- see about setting up some big discussions to get back to more of the planning issues and communications uh, between us and the county relative to the planning changes, uh, especially for the density changes and the growth changes within Middletown. And it really is a point of time that, when you get down and think about it, there is a possibility that the whole atmosphere of the Middletown-South County area, uh, can be changing. Uh, the growth seems to go out every, most every town, well, most every town that I've lived in, uh, include from Nevada North, uh, Petaluma, Healdsburg, uh, Calistoga, all these towns go through this kind of a growth pattern initially. And, uh, I think it's, it's coming to the infancy here in our community. And we more than, more than ever need this open discussion with who's making the plans here. We don't have a city council, we don't have our own planning department, we don't have a, a city manager, we don't have a city attorney, we don't have all these people to, to assist us. Who's making the decisions for us and, and, uh, how are they involved? Are they really listening to us? And that's what we need to keep going. You ready to go? Kevin? Oh. Go ahead.
Hello, Professor.
Hold on a second.
I'm fine, how are you?
Is that Kevin?
Kevin Case.
Lovely, um. Uh, we very much appreciate you getting back to us. Sorry, there were, there were some, uh, issues with the voicemail and figuring out what day we were calling for. Um, ironically, you have called me in the middle of our special meeting.
You can go as long as you want, it's all right.
Um, I'm, I'm literally in front of a mic right now. Um, I don't know if you have time right now. I wouldn't mind putting you on speaker to hop into a little Q and A. Um, is that something that you're available to do right now? Right. Um, yeah, I, I don't think that would viol- I, him answering questions for us wouldn't violate any kind of county staffing, anything. No, I think that it would just be us kind of asking for clarification on, um, things with the EIR. Just, it's a lot of information for us to sift through. And so some of the community had questions, um, that are probably addressed in the EIR. It would be wonderful if we could get your input.
Bill? As long as we stick to the topic, which is the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just want questions related to the fire, fire issues that, uh, are being addressed and the changes.
Um, yeah, it's just things regarding the changes with the, the fire. I believe that that's what they're addressing on the twenty-fourth. And so we're wanting to just ask a few questions regarding the EIR and the improvements, um, that are suggested for, that are being voted on on the twenty-fourth. Do you mind if I put you on speaker? All right, great, thanks. All right, I'm putting you on speaker right now. All right, everyone, this is, uh, okay. Putting you down in front of a mic, Kevin.
There you go.
Uh, this is Kevin Case with the Guanac Valley Project. Um, Kevin, you are on.
Okay. Hello, everybody.
Can you guys hear him?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I apologize, we've had, I've had some issues with my voicemail message, and I just had a message come in with about eight others. And, uh, this is one, so I called and, sorry, I'm calling at a, I don't know if it's a convenient time or an inconvenient time, but anyway, uh, happy to answer any questions and help you any way that I can.
Um, Fletcher, we'll need you to probably go to the mic so that he can hear you.
Hi, Kevin, this is Fletcher Thornton.
Hello, Fletcher.
How you doing? Hey, I just have a couple questions regarding the, um, modifications that were required, and you approved to take care of the fire, uh, the ingress and egress for fire evacuation.
Correct. Do you want me to explain a little bit about the process on that?
Well, if you could, just explain what, what actions you've taken to mitigate the concerns that people have regarding evacuation from the project in case of fire.
Okay. But was, you probably know, we worked extensively with, uh, Fair and Peers, who's a, one of the top traffic engineering companies in, in the state, and worked very closely with Cal Fire as well. But what we, uh, what was required is a, another ingress, egress, like you said, uh, besides the two that we had on Butts Canyon Road. And so we were able to work with the Comstock family there to get an easement through their property. We've got, uh, uh, part of the, as it stated in your, in your document there, we've got part of it is on our land, on our property for that evacuation route, and then part of it's on the Comstock that then touches into Grange Road. And then obviously, from Grange Road, there was analysis done on twenty-nine highway where we would have, uh, an, again, another egress point there at, um, at twenty-nine and, and, uh, and Grange Road.
Thank you.
Oh, one, one, uh, one more, Kevin. Did you make any changes on the interior, uh, to, um, make, uh, uh, e- and egress a little easier? Didn't you put a loop in or change some roads on the interior?
We did. That was another requirement, uh, that we had as well, that no road leads could be over a mile. So we had some dead inroads that ex- that exceeded that. And that was really a result of working with the Attorney General's Office, and we had made those adjustments and made those changes to the site plan. Um, there was another significant, uh, change that had also taken place from a fire standpoint, and that was some of the lots that we had in two of our different districts that we had on the project that, uh, we removed, that were on the northern side, that we removed. They were more high, fi- uh, fire-prone areas and more susceptible to, to wildfires, and they were asked to be moved and taken out of that area. Uh, so there was about, somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty lots, residential lots, that were taken out of those areas, uh, that we had removed, uh, at the, again, at the request of the Attorney General. And that's what reflected in this new, um, EIR document.
Thank you, Kevin.
Um, Kevin, my name is Carlos Bono, and I was, um, I was wondering how the EIR affects the new housing, uh, for Middletown? The residential housing, um, project that you planned to pu- put up here in Middletown? How will the EIR, um, respond to that?
Okay, I'm not sure I quite understand the questionnaire, Carl, I apologize.
Okay, well, you, you've got a, you've got a proposed-
Our EIR or our project would affect-
You have a proposed, you have a proposed housing project for, uh, workers for your, uh, project at Guanac, right here in Middletown. How is the EIR going to affect? How is it going to be, uh, you know, accommodate those extra three hundred or five hundred extra people?
How does it address it?
How does it address it? Thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, the EIR wa- basically what the EIR just states is how we're going to handle and accommodate workforce housing. Cause as we all know, this project's gonna generate a lot of jobs in the workforce. Um, and again, as we've stated from early on, is our initiative and, and our main objective is to work with the locals as much as we possibly can. I don't know if there's, we don't know if there's enough of the local population there in Lake County to facilitate that. So we will have some people coming in from other areas. And as a result of it, in our EIR, we had to address of where we would put those, those workers. And we identified a piece of property, as you well know, in Santa Clara, there in Middletown, uh, to accommodate that.
Why don't, why, why can't, why can't you accommodate your workers?
Wait, 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 we're not going, we're not going into it in depth. You asked him a question, he's answering it. Let him answer it, and then, cause this is getting away from the fire thing again, which is what we're supposed to be addressing here. We already talked about that.
With all due respect, if you put three hundred, if you put three hundred extra people-
You're not having respect for the property or for the, for the meeting as it is.
Okay, listen, listen, and I, I, I support all of you. Here's the thing, I'm having to turn up, crank up the volume to get his conversation. When you try to speak, we're just gonna over-modulate. And, uh, so, uh, let, let the gentleman finish, and then give me a second to turn it down, and then you can respond. And then we can hear everybody, otherwise, yeah, we're just going, we're gonna go in this constant crazy loop of, ah, craziness. So, okay. All right, so I'm gonna go back to the gentleman who's on the phone, and go ahead, sir.
Finish your question, and then have him respond, and then let's get on with, back to our main topic.
All right. Uh, is there a reason why you are putting your workers' habitation here in central Middletown and not up at the project where you, where they should be?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, there was, it was definitely by design. Um, the design was to have a positive impact on Middletown. We felt like we could help local businesses, which has always been our goal, is to help the local restaurants, retail shops, et cetera, if our employees were there in Middletown to help vibrate the downtown area. Um, and as a result of it, I don't know how many of the business owners would agree with that, I think the majority of them would. But we've also been very sensitive to understanding the property that we had presented, that we had purchased, uh, is one that, again, is one, we, it's a, it's an option for us, we still have other options. Uh, we have plenty of property and that's what we've told many, we have plenty of property, we could do it on our pro- on our site, just as you had noted. And that makes a lot of logical sense, we, if you're working there and you're spending a lot of time, eight, ten hours a day at a particular work spot, I'm not sure you really wanna live there as well on site. So, again, it was done with intention, um, I've talked to, uh, Monica Rosenthal and others about that and said, you know what, we've got other options we can talk about. Um, we wanna make sure everything's on the board and, and we're upfront with everybody who has a concern about it and how we can address that concern. But, um, again, that's what, in part of the EIR is, we've gotta be able to, to, uh, articulate and explain where we're planning to put some of our workforce and that's, that was identified. We know there's a few people that do have concerns, we understand that, we're gonna continue to work with those people to rectify any concerns that they may have.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it, Margot?
Thank you. Um, just a follow-up question to, uh, Mr. Bono's question, uh, where in the project documentation, uh, can we find information on the projected demand on services such as schools, water, um, along those lines?
Yeah, again, we're getting off topic.
Um, but, uh, going back to the main topic on, uh, improvements on Grange Road Connector, uh, can you comment more on the efforts, um, or improvements made to make the road forty-two ninety compliant? Thank you, oh, and also, what traffic studies were done, um, in anticipation of the heavy traffic for egress and, um, ingress in, in the event of a, um, evacuation disaster, thank you.
Uh, to answer your question, yeah, like I said, we worked with Fear and Peers, our traffic engineers, there's been several different analysis that are done that are in our evacuation plan. Uh, along with that too, we also worked in conjunction with Caltrans and there are some improvements on Twenty-Nine Highway that we'll be, uh, we'll be putting in place when, when the project, uh, gets moving and we, we get, uh, get our approvals and can start this project. So, we've been very sensitive to that as well and wanna make sure that we carry out, you know, we, we're carrying out that part of it to make sure, again, that that evacuation route doesn't just impede, um, you know, the population of just our project on the Twenty-Nine Highway, but that everybody, it, it takes in the whole region, Hidden Valley and all the other areas as well into consideration when that traffic, uh, analysis was done. And it should be in your report too and in the evacuation report, again, that was required by the, uh, the State Attorney General's Office. To answer your question, there's been a lot of studies that have been done on how, not just, again, how we evacuate and how we have an access out of our property, but also the impact that it has on the local, uh, on the, the local traffic patterns.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, is there any other questions anybody has for Kevin?
Yes.
Mentioned, uh, your, your, the plans are still there for, uh, the fire department substation on the property, correct?
That is correct, that is, uh, something that we offered up early in, when we started the project and we will actually be building, it's actually starting the preliminary design of a Cal Fire station now to meet all of its specifications. Uh, and also, as, as part of that, we're building it, we're responsible to fund it, um, equipment-wise and so forth, that's a pretty heavy lift, you can imagine that's a pretty expensive, uh, endeavor, but we felt like that was not only great for our project, but that's also a, a station that's, will help that whole region of, of Lake County. And it was very much in need, so, again, it won't just be res- first responders on our property, it'll be for the entire, uh, South Lake Fire community and they'll be operating the, the fire station.
Yeah.
And we also have a helipad there as well, uh, with fueling capabilities and so forth with Cal Fire as well, so we've worked very, very closely with, uh, with Mike Wink and, and Rick Duncan and several others of the Cal Fire to make sure that we're, uh, you know, bringing forth a, a premier station there for them.
Somebody read something, uh, out of one of the, uh, comment sections here, about twenty-five percent of the population being evacuated by helicopter or plane, that's during an emergency, that's, that's quite a few people.
What? I haven't, I haven't read that one.
It's on page fifty-one, um, the appendix.
In the appendix.
Twenty-five percent, okay.
Uh, that, that's a pretty good endeavor.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big helicopter.
It's a four plane.
Or a plane, yeah, well, it takes a big runway to, hey, hold that, a plane that'll do all that as well, alright.
Right.
Uh, one more question and I think we're finished. Is there a plan for, you're having an airstrip on the property, are you not?
Uh, we do not have an airstrip on our property.
Weren't you going to put one there?
We.
Or you talked about it?
We did, we looked at it one time, we've had several conversations to get a, uh, uh, an airstrip approved, in today's world, FAA is, is very, very challenging and so that's not our intent to have it on our property. Uh, there's some others in Lake County that we are looking to maybe consider of helping and assist to extend some runways and so forth to bring a little bit larger aircraft into the area, but it would not be anywhere near our site. And none of those, none of those have come to fruition yet, we're just still in.
I know Bram.
It's exploration stage.
Brambles, Brambles Park, which is just down the street from you then, basically is, uh, is, still has their runway and are still, and are actually using it too. Uh, so, do know there's one, there's one close there, alright.
Right, yeah.
One more, one more question? Okay. This is on fire now?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Kevin, thank you for, uh, taking the call and, uh, being here to talk to us, uh, my name's Julia Bono, um, you might recognize my name, I'm the author of, uh, two letters, uh, co-author of two letters that we've sent to your organization regarding the concerns that residents of downtown Middletown have, uh, regarding the worker community that you plan on citing here. Uh, we feel very much that there's a big concern among people about the fire, uh, evacuation possibilities, as well as the stress on infrastructure. I've detailed everything in my le- my two letters, I have not received a response other than your letter's been received and I would really like to get some response so I can tell all the people that are talking to me about this and, you know, exhibiting considerable concern, what to think.
Right, well, I, I would love to have an, an, uh, kind of an off-record conversation with you about that, if I could, I'd be happy to follow up with you.
Sure. I believe one of my letters was addressed to, uh, your organization, uh, is there an email address that I should address it to or would you like?
Yes.
Yes.
You're welcome, yes, you can send it to KC.
KC, K as in the letter, C as in cat?
At. Yes, ma'am, yeah, just the letter, K and then a C.
Yes.
And then at.
Mm-hmm.
Mahaman, M-A-H-A-M-A-N dot com.
M-A-N as in man?
Yes, ma'am, uh-huh, M-A-N.
KC at Mahaman dot com, okay, sir, thank you.
That's it, that's it, you'll send me an email, I'll be back to you, we're on that today.
I appreciate that, sir, bye-bye.
Absolutely.
Alright, Kevin, I lied to you, we have, uh.
Comment from Zoom.
A comment coming in from Zoom, so.
Not from Zoom, from YouTube. No, YouTube.
Oh, YouTube, okay.
Yeah, we're on YouTube, okay, um, so, this, this comes from Angie, uh, the assessment states ten percent of residents and fifteen percents of guests, uh, will take twelve, uh, and will take twelve hundred trips, it's in their assessment, is he saying, uh, the assessment is wrong. And so this assessment was page fifty-one of the appendix, H-one wildfire and evacuation assessment. It says twenty-five percent of the residents and guests will be evacuated, evacuated by a plane or helicopter, estimated to be over twelve hundred trips. So, are you saying the assessment is wrong, that's the question?
No, I'm just saying I had not seen that, um, and there's thousands of documents that I have read, over an environmental, you can imagine, and I, I missed that and I, I apologize and I would like to get a little bit more clarification on that myself and, uh, and I'll be happy to do that.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of pages there to go through, I understand.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, well, the, the original EIR and then this one and then, we've also got two very large documents as well that I've supplied to several people on, uh, the, the supervisors and also some of the planning commissioners that have requested them and they're the, uh, wildfire risk assessment. Where we actually modeled, uh, the project to determine, uh, that it was less risk of it being developed in its current state and that report proved out and then we also have our wildfire protection plan as well, which is a supplement to it as well, which is a very in-depth, we worked with a lot of the fire science specialists at UC Berkeley. Uh, again, many, many conversations working with Cal Fire, uh, we worked with, uh, Marin County on their, with their fire people and so forth and there's a lot of technology companies as well that we've been working on. Our goal, day one, was always to be the fire, uh, have a fire-safe community in California and as we all know, that's a challenge in itself and that's the reason that we're doing things like ex- exterior fire suppression systems on all of our buildings, um, all of our structures. And that's not a requirement of the state, but that's a requirement of our development and it's a commitment that we've made. Uh, the defensible spacing is probably more conservative than any other project that we're aware of in the state of California and, and that was worked with State Attorney General, uh, on our roadways, our road to win, roadways, um, again, we have the fire station, I mean, there's just the, our grazing plan, everything we can to try to keep not only our community safe, but the impact it'll have on the surrounding developments as well, again, Hidden Valley and, and others. Uh, but that's what we were, that's been our goal from day one, is to make sure that we've just got kind of a new standard when it comes to fire safety. And we're gonna continue that, that's not, again, that's not just rhetoric, that's, you know, it's, that's, we gotta prove that out, we have to make sure that this, this community is very, very safe, again, not just for our residents and our guests, but for the entire Lake County.
And I'm sure that eventually those ideas and everything, uh, you'll be presenting to the county, uh, as well as, as hopefully math anyway, that, uh, as you develop a plan to put all those formulas together, uh, that still has to be approved, right? This, these are just the concepts that you're bringing up right now, right? Or am I wrong on that?
Uh, actually, no, the, uh, the reports that we put together have been approved, um, and will continue, like I said, as, as we all know, fire safety's in evolving, um, you know, it's continued, the technology's continuing to improve and there's new techniques and, and home hardening materials and all those things that continue, hopefully, we're just on the cusp of some great things to come to really help us to make sure that, again, it's not just about our community, but that the entire state of California and, and particularly our area of Lake County is, is protected from some of these wildfires and early detection devices, those type of things. Um, obviously, we haven't proved all of that out yet, but those are the, cause we don't have anything to install those, those on yet, but those are things that we're gonna be putting into, into action. And as I, you know, I've told Monica and others as well, as soon as we get through this process, you know, we would love to continue to participate and, and come to math meetings and to hear from the community of, of what they are, what they were like, you know, what, how does this project benefit them, whether it's job creations or other technologies that we also can share. Um, that's really what we wanna continue to be as a, as a good neighbor and, and not take, but actually give back as well.
Thank you. Do you have another question for?
I do, Lisa Kaplan, um, I, thank you for beaming in and thank you for the words that you just said, because I think we want to be in a dialogue, if you're gonna be here. Um, you know, I think that, as has been expressed, the people who live and work in Middletown are very concerned about the actual impacts that the, uh, development would have here, which should be part of the EIR and it should be addressed in depth in terms of impacts in schools, on schools and on traffic. And then that takes us back to fire safety, um, and I actually am going to ask you, Bill, if you would express what you expressed to all of us about fire safety, because you had some concerns as well. So, um, Kevin, I would, I have a, I would really like you to ask us if we really want all of those residents here, uh, because the impacts are gonna be very big and it's gonna impact a lot of us in terms of our long-term investments here as well. Um, and a point, uh, unfortunately, there's a lot of changes coming to Middletown and that is gonna affect all of us, but, Bill, if you would just talk, cause you mentioned traffic as well, you know, during the valley fire, how difficult it was to get out and how there were vehicles stalled and burning in the road.
The, uh, as Lisa brought up, Kevin, I, I was here and on the Board of Directors at Hidden Valley Lake when the valley fire hit. So, we had people very limited ways out, uh, and, uh, as the fire was coming at Hidden Valley, it made an abrupt turn and started going south and that's when the fire came into Middletown and actually passed over Highway Twenty-Nine. What I saw was people trying to evacuate out even, uh, towards Middletown, which is one of the three routes that we have in South County that's exiting out of the county. And, but people were driving down Butts Canyon Road and the fire was chasing them or crossing the road there, as well as even Highway Twenty-Nine on the way into Middletown, uh, and Twenty-Nine to the north, actually, uh, there for a short period of time. So, it was very scary to see cars on fire and everything else going, uh, it's, it, for me especially, uh, and I speak for myself here, it concerns me a great deal as to the evacuation process and what we're doing for here. Because to bring that many people in and combine it with the other, uh, projects that are planning on being developed here, that is quite a big, uh, impact onto our exiting and, and transportation here in the community. And I think that needs to be addressed very, very heavily, I know years and years and years ago, uh, uh, it was also addressed by the Army Corps of Engineers as far as just being able to get out of the county. A lot of those plans never came to fruition, but the Army Corps did do some planning work there as well. Uh, so that, uh, that's just, I just throw that out there, is I'm available, uh, to discuss some of these items, I actually stayed in Hidden Valley and, uh, participated in the rehab, repopulation, so, I lived through it all. PTSD, I guess.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And we were there two thousand nineteen on property too during, during the fires.
Yep.
That came to there, worked with Cal Fire and helped really, uh, and tried to basically, we worked with Cal Fire to make sure the property, that it came over onto our property and that was by, by design as well and we can extinguish the fire out there, we have a lot of fire breaks and so forth out there. And over the years, you know, Mike Wink and others have told us that they'd used this property before to, to extinguish the fires, to keep it from going over into Hidden Valley and so forth and when this project's developed out, that's what this massive report cost us a lot of money and a lot of time to put together with the UC Berkeley and, and fire experts and traffic experts and so forth, was to really determine that this, this project, when it's built out, is, really is, makes the community safer than it does in its current state. You know, when you've got a lot of, again, defensible spacing and, and wildfire management of property too, where, you know, you can control chaparral and you can control some of these, you know, very, very, uh, high fire-prone, uh, vegetation and so forth and, you know, things that you would do at your individual property, we just have to do it on a larger scale. Which obviously, there's a lot of money and so forth that goes into doing that, but, again, you know, we're, we are very conscientious about that, we are open to all the ideas. Again, we're here, we're making a massive investment into Lake County community, we wanna make it a better way of life, not to have any, you know, not to do the opposite and, uh, and be a detriment here. Now, most of our, our guests and, uh, most of our residents, these are second, third home buyers, we will not be stressing the school systems, uh, most of this, the, the, the children and so forth that will be, will be employees, uh, of ours that might be coming into the area that have children. And that's where we would see a little bit of, uh, kind of an uptick, if you will. But, um, again, if you really look at some of the advantages, and I'd be happy to share some documents as far as what it can do from an economic standpoint of Lake County, from property taxes, et cetera, uh, what we're donating as far as fire stations and fire equipment, et cetera, et cetera, I think, you know, I mean, there's not, there's not a perfect answer for it. And, you know, with new development, it's, it's difficult, um, to have that change and, and we can always look at the opposite side of it, we have looked at what's the worst-case scenario and, as we all know, it's wildfire, I mean, there's no question about that, we're not, it's the elephant in the room and we haven't kinda danced around it as you would think, we've spent, and even before, I mean, when my first came on site in twenty eighteen, first meeting I- first meeting I remember is worth, community, other ranch, uh, owners in the community, we put together consortium and just said, how do we come together and how do we make each other's property safer? How do we collaborate, you know, and bring resources? Because it's very expensive, as we all know, to, for a lot of these fire management, uh, techniques and defensible spacing and, you know, how you backburn and the things that, that you can do and can't do, and how do we work together, again, not just on ours, because it affects everybody's property. Um, you know, unfortunately, they're, they don't, these wildfires don't discriminate, they'll hit whatever they, wherever the ambers blow to, you know? So, I, I hear what everybody's saying, I promise you, we have spent a lot of money, a lot of time, and we're gonna continue to do just that. It's not the end-all, this, or a report is a, is a report of talking about the various techniques and things that can be done, very, which you people are very much familiar with, a lot of you, hopefully, you're doing on your, your own private residence. Um, ours is just a bigger scale. But, you know, most of our, we don't anticipate their, you know, all of our, these residents too, I just wanna stress the fact that, you know, this is a resort community, these are second, third homes, and people aren't gonna be here, you know, seven days a week, 365 days, um, not even close. I wish they would, it'd be great, it'd be great for us, but that's not what the project's designed for. And, um, but again, like I said, it's gonna help a lot of ways. We want people to come and understand the history of Middletown and, you know, whether it's the tribal piece of it, we wanna, we wanna be respectful of that, and we will. The project will, will honor Lake County, its history, and, uh, and we're, we're excited about that. We could've made this investment anywhere in the United States, and this is where we chose to make this incredible investment. I mean, it's, it's, it's massive. And, but again, I really do think it's, with, with change comes, you know, sometimes it's difficult. But I can tell you, and I hope anybody that's, that's, that I've had an opportunity to sit down and talk with sees the same way, and I don't, it's not me, it's a, it's a whole team of people. But I can tell you, our team of people is very collaborative, we wanted to, we wanna be a part of the community, we wanna be respected here, we're not just looking for an approval and turn our back at all. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be the complete opposite, we're reliant on Lake County. If Lake County's successful, then we'll be successful and vice versa.
Agreed. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome, yeah, and I, I appreciate your time, I do, I've gotta jump on another meeting. I apologize so much that I wasn't there in person, um, I'm glad I got, my voicemail came through when it did. Um, but anyway, I, you know, like, like I said, I hope I can get your support or the project in. Uh, again, it's not me, and if there's anybody who wants to reach out, you've got my email address. I hope I don't get 100 today, because I've got a bunch of them already in there, but anybody that's got a real concern, please do reach out. You're welcome to email me, um, and I will get back to you, uh, that's a commitment you have from me.
Thank you.
Hi, I just have one question, and that is regarding all the helicopters that are going to be evacuating these people. How is this going to interfere with the firefighting, uh, aircraft or not? Anyway, I think that should be addressed and a very important issue, because you're talking about a lot of helicopters or a lot of people being evacuated, which means a lot, that there's not gonna be one or two helicopters taking off. So, I think that issue, issue needs to be addressed, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, CalFire, CalFire will have a precedent, I can assure you that. And, um.
Okay.
So, but I, I, I will, I will look into that, I apologize, I, I did miss that and I couldn't speak to it intelligently, I apologize, but, uh, I will look into that, uh, that part of the study as well.
One more, please, Kevin.
One more, Kevin. I said, I said that a long time ago, but that's okay.
I'll be really brief, hopefully. Uh, my name is Dan Terrell, I'm the president of the Merchants Association here in Middletown. And it's, uh, I, I get front row seats to see, uh, Mr. Bill Waite's, uh, expression, the pain, you know, across his face when he's describing the fire. I lived on Grange Road during valley fire and my cars, my car was one of the ones that burned up on the highway. I would, um, strongly, um, encourage you to not look at Grange as the end of the evacuation.
Right.
If you're, if, I, I know you're probably doing your due diligence, but I, I strongly advise you to look at that as just another step in the escape route. And it, it's a, it's a harrowing, uh, experience, I don't ever wanna go through it again. And I would feel horrible if the number of people that were in your facility, uh, were, had to experience that as well. So, that's my time. Thank you for, for talking.
Well, I, I hope you don't, I hope you don't have to experience it either. But at the same time, I, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I take note of it, no, it's not an end-all. Um, we'll, this project, as, as every other project, and everybody's continued to look and see a ways that we can improve and where can we improve? Um, you know, obviously, our, our main access points are gonna be the two major intersections there on Butts Canyon, but again, we don't control which way the fires come, etc., and so forth. So, we are thankful we've got that other route as a, as a backup. Um, and, but if there's other ways and we've looked at, you know, how else can we get? Where else can we get another, uh, point, you know, where else can we get people in and out? So, everybody's, we've all got the same problem, I think we just all can't, you know, it's gonna continue to be, have conversations and put together a consortium of just people in the community to really talk about the issues when it comes to wildfire. And I think between a lot of different people and, and we work with, um, NAPA's got a society too called Fire Wise, uh, and a lot of intel that they're doing there, not that we have to, you know, implement that here, but we are getting a lot of good information that we'll be able to use in, in our community as well. So, you know, I can, last thing I'll say, you know, before I jump off, and I apologize, I do have another call, but is a fact of, you know what, we're, we're committed to Lake County, we're, we are, wanna be a, you know, we wanna support you and, and your efforts and your businesses and, and hopefully you guys will do the same, we'll reciprocate. But, um, any, like I said, anybody that's got, wants to reach out to me, please do so, communication's important. And we're not running from anybody, we're hitting them head-on and, and we'll continue to do that, uh, even in down the future.
Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's time, I thank you for getting together and having this discussion about the project, that's important. Um, and again, I apologize, I, I wasn't there in person, but thank you for allowing me the opportunity to, to dial in with you.
Thanks for calling us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for calling and, uh, good timing.
Thanks for taking my call. Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
That was nice of him, took time and answered, I think, a few questions or at least enlightened us on some answers, some possibilities, but where they're coming from and what they're doing. And, uh, I think that was a, a good response from him. So, unless somebody else has something they wanna bring up at this particular point? Yeah, we're way over time, actually. Uh, we, I think we were supposed to wrap up around 1 o'clock, but that's okay. Uh, I think we got some good information out of, out of, out of Kevin on that and, and beneficial for everybody. So, unless, uh, there's some other reason we shouldn't, I think we will adjourn, and thank you very much for coming and, and joining in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.